Two Commissioners will be joining, but we did have a meeting before this one that ran longer than we expected, so we apologize for getting the late start. So let's go ahead and kick things off. And I think that Jennifer Chilton is gonna tee us off with an introduction of the budget presentations, and then we'll hear from the city and county schools and AB Tech following that, and then of course from the fire districts later in the afternoon. So thank you all for being here and taking time to be with us today to talk about the budgets for this year.
Thank you Chairman. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. So I do want to start us off with a review of the historical spending for public schools. We did view this information in an earlier work session in February for this board. Just want to discuss the expenses paid from the general fund in support of Buncombe County and Asheville City School Systems. To review the trends briefly again, education expenses in the general fund equate to 24.84% of all general fund budgeted expenditures. Depicted here are each year's total contribution. The totals are broken out into the salary supplements in the light blue, other operating expenses in the dark blue, and again want to reference the fiscal year 2016, $4.6 million, which was a one-time dollar amount approved by the Board of Commissioners as a transfer to pay debt service in support of Asheville City Schools, Isaac Dixon, and Asheville Middle School Capital Projects. Growth in the budgeted expenditures from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 18 is 22%. The increases from each fiscal year to the next are depicted at the top. Finally, for your reference in the top corner, in February we reviewed the combined average daily membership for data that was available at the time. Updated in the, sorry, that was the magenta line. So the blue has been updated, was able to locate on the Department of Public Instruction's site the allotted average daily membership for each Asheville City and Buncombe County Schools, which also includes charter schools. So that is depicted in the top corner. Wanted to additionally provide you with information around other general fund supports that is provided for public education. That consists of the three categories here. So funding for school resource officers, the school nurse program, and the school social workers. Those dollars fund 31 school nursing staff through a partnership with MAHEC, 22 school resource officers, and four school social work prevention staff. So just wanted to start you off with some of that funding history. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Baldwin for local county schools.
Well, if you're pewing that up, y'all's packets have all the information, also all the specific questions you asked in during the day's session, and summary sheets for both of you there.
Thank you for having us. Dr. Patterson was actually supposed to start, but she looked at me and said, "Age before beauty, so here I am." So ready or not. I do want to introduce a very special leadership team that I've brought with me from Buncombe County Schools. And first, my right hand, to my right, my right-hand person is Suzanne Swanger, our Associate Superintendent, who I think all of you know. Deborah Frisbee, who is our Chief Finance Officer. Deborah is the person behind the data, and will probably, I'll probably be sending a lot of questions her way. Our Executive Human Resource Director, Ms. Cynthia Lopez is there. We added executive title to her because when you look at our budget, 90% of the operating budget is in human resources, so we figured we needed to add an executive onto her title. And then a very special resource from Buncombe County Schools and a real leader in student services counseling, especially David Thompson, is with us today. So with that, Suzanne, I'm gonna start out with the slide just to show you average daily membership trends. And I think you're aware of this. For Buncombe County Schools, we live in a time of choice. This is, I think, the third largest area for homeschool. We also have some extremely high-quality choices for private school, and we certainly have a growing charter school population. Enrollment is on a decline. I'm gonna show you a slide in just a little bit that will show that decline sort of stabilizing out to some degree. But when you look at the six districts in Buncombe County, what we find most interesting in terms of the pattern has to do with affordable housing. We see demographic shifts more often than not within Buncombe County itself, and it moves from one district to another. And that's been a trend that I think has held true for about the last six years that I've looked at that particular data. Next slide, it's actually, I'm gonna show you two slides that our Department of Public Instruction has provided this data to us, and Denise and I both agree that DPI numbers tend to be, tend to be much more conservative than actually they are in terms of enrollment, which from a funding standpoint is a good thing, because it, for us, it's better to be looking at more money than less money. But when you look at the DPI projections, and that goes all the way to 2025, '26, whatever that means, I don't think if you go beyond five years, it's a long shot, but they have expanded that length of time. You're gonna see Buncombe as compared to our neighboring counties, Yancey County showing a similar pattern, McDowell County, our neighbors to the east, and then Madison County, our neighbors to the north. And then our next slide will show Haywood County, which is to our west, again a similar pattern that's being projected through DPI numbers. Transylvania, Henderson County, and both Buncombe and Henderson represent the two largest school districts in the west, west of Charlotte. And then Asheville City, and I think you're gonna see that in Denise's slide, that they show, are showing that upward trend, which is certainly a good thing for that particular school system. And any time stopping to ask questions, again, that's why I have the leadership team. If I can't answer the question, I think I've got good resources to have an answer for you. Does everyone have a copy of these slides in front of them? Because some of this information, I think the numbers are gonna be hard to read. I think this is a very important slide, per pupil expenditure. And the reason that I want you as Commissioners to take a close look at it is I think this is a feel-good slide. If I were a Commissioner, I've been a veteran Commissioner, I'd feel pretty darn good about what you're gonna see on this particular slide. As you are aware, our sources of funding are state, federal, and local. For us, and I'll show you a slide in just a few minutes, the majority of our funding, and this is different from Asheville City, majority of our funding comes from the state. In fact, 60% of that funding is from state sources. You're also gonna hear me once again complaining about the timeline, but we historically don't find out about the final state funding until late in the summer, which makes it very difficult for planning purposes. Then we have the federal funds. Again, they represent this particular year, school year, around 6%. Some of you may recall the stimulus and stabilization, the federal funds that came back in 2009, 2010. At that point in time, our percentage of federal funds for our budget was around 13%. And that has continued to decrease. And as you look from 2012, '13, all the way to the '16, '17, which is the most current numbers that we have, you'll see that decline that's taking place in federal funding, and then local funding. And that's where I think, as Commissioners, you should feel very proud in terms of the support for public education here in Buncombe County and Asheville City. When you look at the rank across the state, you will see that state funds for Buncombe County Schools for '16, '17, there's 115 school systems in the state, and we rank 95th with that amount. So again, we're below that average in terms of state funding that comes to us. When you look at federal, we rank 96th, even a rank lower. Again, you can see the figures as they have decreased across these five years. But then when you look at local, again, those figures have increased. And for us, out of 115 school systems, Buncombe County Schools ranks 19th for '16, '17 in terms of local funds. That's a very good thing. And again, I think that's something that the Commission should certainly take a lot of credit over in terms of being able to say you support local school systems. I will also tell you that when you look at the state numbers and federal numbers, it's a darn good thing for us in Buncombe County Schools that you do support us. And as a veteran administrator, I see that trend continuing. I think the dependence upon local funding is gonna continue in this state, especially for the Buncombe County School System. Any questions on that? You know, I might also add to you, we get a lot of questions about charter school, and one of the issues that we continue to address as Superintendents at our conferences is the whole aspect of funding. When a student leaves Buncombe County Schools, that $8,914 goes with them to the charter. Some of the concern we have is if that student leaves in August, yet they return in January, that funding source doesn't come back with them. That's something to keep in mind. And again, that's been, that's been something that we've challenged. I think Dr. Patterson and I have both seen that across the state from Superintendents. Okay, next slide. Some of you might prefer looking at this in terms of a chart, our chart. Again, it shows that similar pattern in terms of state funds, and where we compare in terms of the state average. Above the line, when we look across the state at all the systems, we're well above the local, which again is attributed to your commitment and dedication to public schools. When you look at our total operating budget, once again, and this is important to understand public school funding, we are heavily dependent upon state funds, much less dependent this year than we were five years ago, but still dependent, 60%. Again, the increase has occurred at the local level. It's moved from around 25% back in '9, '10, to now 30%. And then the lower amount of federal funding that represents our total operating budget. Total operating budget, $239,304,855. Where does it go? 90% of it goes to human resources, salaries, benefits. I don't think that's unusual. I don't think that's out of line. We are a people business. We're a business to focus on the learning environment for our students, heavily with staff, support staff. And again, the state funding that comes to us does not adequately cover all the positions that we need in order to do our job. And I think that's true across the board. I think you're gonna see that as well from Dr. Patterson's presentation. In order to meet the needs, and I'm gonna talk a little bit at the end of this presentation about what you've identified as your priorities. And I think especially several of those priorities speak to the increasing needs that you find in the community, that any time there's a need in the community, the odds are extremely high that you're gonna see that overflow into the schools. It's directly connected. Retention strategies, incentives, we've been very fortunate when you look across the state in terms of our ability to not only retain our staff, our professional educators, but also to attract them. And three of the areas that we feel very confident that we have been able to address is first, we looked at the living wage. I recall two years ago that that was brought, an issue that was brought to us from the Commissioners. In fact, I'm gonna ask Ms. Lopez, as a handout for you, that gives more specific information, is you start to compare both our certified and non-certified staff. Certified staff, teachers, counselors, principals, central office. Non-certified, we're talking about our instructional assistants, we're talking about our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. In both of those cases, we kept an eye, especially on that figure, as it relates to what attracts people into this profession. Hopefully, number one, first and foremost, is they have a love for kids. They have a story to tell. But it also doesn't hurt that we've got a good benefit package. And for especially for many of our non-certified, that's important. So when you look at that total package, you talk about living wage, that's included as well. And then thank you for increasing the local supplement. And the person that's gonna be handing out this information really appreciates it because she's on the road recruiting teachers. And this is, this is the time that we recruit, and it's nice to go to these job fairs and see lines of people in front of our table. And I'll also say in front, Denise, in front of your table too, because we are able to attract high-quality candidates, and to some degree, that really goes back to the ability to offer the type of local supplement that we've been able to do here in Buncombe County and Asheville City, thanks to you. And then affordable teacher housing. So very proud of the Williams-Baldwin Apartments. That's a joint venture with Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City. It wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for the contribution that you as Commissioners made with our property, and we are 100% full, and we're in the waiting list game. And it's interesting, I asked Cynthia last week, when people come up and ask you questions about Buncombe County Schools, half the time they're coming up to ask about the affordable housing and the apartments. And I see this, as a longtime native of Buncombe County, I see this as a possibility to expand into other public service agencies as well, because affordable housing is an important topic. It's actually one of your priorities, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Lopez, do you want to hand that out and anything you want to address?
It is, it has been handed out, I understand. Ms. Price hasn't.
It's in the packets, in your packets.
It's in the packets.
It's been written for the public.
I wanted to give you that specific information and those numbers, because we know that's an issue that has been raised by the Commission, so we just want to make sure that you're seeing our response in terms of making sure that those salaries that are offered, that those increases are relevant to what that living wage is.
So, Dr. Baldwin, just a question. On the, on this, this graph here, or this page, it shows the non-certified. Is there a way to know how much of the last budget, I think it was last, last budget, when the supplement was increased, or when we had 16, 16, when we did the increase, how much of a raise they got? This does show us, you know, that, it shows us the ranges, and we can make, you know, our judgments or preferences, you know, depending on where we would like to see those, but I'd just like to know, you know, how much of that raise, how much they got, if there's a way to know that.
So Commissioner Belcher, you're talking about the 16% that went to our teaching staff, right?
No, teacher assistance, non-certified.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So the supplement for our non-certified staff has remained the same, it's 10.77%. But two years ago, the Commissioners, you gave us additional money to put into the salary schedules for our non-certified staff, which we did. I did not provide a comparison here, but I could do that. Back in June of 2016, I think I provided you some information, and we had well over 700 of our non-certified employees who are making in the $12 range. And as you can see, because of the additional funding that you provided to us, and then also because the state last year gave non-certified employees a raise that increased the base pay, the first time in many years, we have been able to get it to the point that it is now.
So, what then, when an employee, he's a custodian, look on his pay and the $11.88 an hour, he's been there for four and a half years?
Okay, so a custodian who is a permanent employee would start at 13:03.
Okay, so he's a permanent employee, he's been there for four years, I've seen his, it's $11.88 an hour. I'm not trying to argue, but I just want to make sure all the information is connected.
So maybe a question is, was, is their supplement included in each check, or is it annual?
It varies. For folks who were employed prior to 2009, they receive the supplement once a year. Most of our non-certified employees, however, are hourly, and their supplement is in their monthly, that semi-monthly paycheck. But we do have a few non-certified who receive it in a lump sum.
So tell me, Ms. Bellman, why this supplement would have $11.88 an hour, and presumably assuming the supplement that, because he's been there for four years, four and a half years.
So this is, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
A custodian, that when he looks at his paycheck, $11.88 an hour.
I would have to research the situation you're talking about, but, and it may be just the way that his check stub reads, that the $11.88 would be his base, then each month in, or twice a month, in each paycheck, he also receives 10.77% in addition to that.
I'll get a copy and my name and get that to you, because I just want to make sure all the information we have, because it's been very confusing, to say the least, and Commissioner Belcher and I are, you know, we just want to make sure everybody's getting what they should get, and, you know, I certainly advocate for spending in schools and teachers, but these folks, I never hear the same advocacy.
And I think that's, and I don't want to get on the soapbox either, because I can get on it for that, for that one, but I think to Commissioner Frost's point is, is no one's doubting, or no one's at all, you know, we just want to make sure that the same amount of concern is given to the teacher assistants and the others that work for non-certified, that we are, that we are, we talk about teachers all the time, and I do too, but I just want to make sure that they have that proper voice, and that we're, and I think it's made a difference in the last few years, you know, not just at this level locally, but in other levels, I think that people are recognizing the importance of, you know, teacher assistants in particularly those lower grades, and also the relationship that kids have in the classroom with custodial help, and, you know. Some people know, most people don't know, that's what my father did, so as a young man, he was a custodian, janitor back in that day. A lot, a lot, got a lot of counsel, kids got a lot of counsel from those positions too, so. Don't want to belabor the point, just want to, just want to make sure that it's made since when.
And we agree. Right, we agree. We, our school principals will tell you how important the bus drivers are, and the custodians, and the instructional assistants, and all of those, so we have been making every effort to make sure that they're recognized as well.
And also, I'd like to just comment on Commissioner Frost, and I'd like to check too, because I know a custodian that's been there 18 years, and he's like 12, 15 an hour, so I, I'd like to find out a little more about that also, because it's a long time being a head custodian.
Ms. Frisbee and I need to take a look at, we need, you know, some names and look at those, those paychecks, because I think they're missing that there is a supplement.
And I will say that we're able to hire those individuals because of local funds. You don't find those funds coming from the state.
I'm sorry?
You don't find those funds coming from the state. Those are local funds in order to support those, support positions. And I'm glad you bring the issue up regarding teacher assistants. I think if you traveled across the state, you're gonna find out that we're in the minority in terms of really safeguarding, supporting, doing the very best that we can to maintain those assistants, especially at that K5 level, because that's not true across the state.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's important for us to, you know, to send that message to whatever level, speak territory, and advocate for those people. I mean, if you've been here a long time, and this is an expensive place to live, so we just want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at those. And I can't, I can control a little bit, you know, at the state federal level, you know, not a lot, but do have some communication there, and your advocacy hours and others, we've been able to change some call processes when it comes to teacher assistants. I think we've made some headway there. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of work to be done there still, yeah.
And I think you'd find that advocacy among your classroom teachers, among your principals at the school base as well.
Man, no doubt.
Yeah, so.
And I think it's important to, I mean, I could get on the soapbox easily, blaming the legislature for many, many things, but the reality is, as your Belcher says, it is what it is, and, you know, we don't need to constantly be told these salaries are because of how generous Buncombe County taxpayers are, because it's not seven of us that's Buncombe County taxpayers who are paying over $20 million for a local supplement, so. I'd love to get on the soapbox of the legislature, but it doesn't work, there's no point. Not known sort of thing.
My favorite topic, fund balance.
It's ours too.
I wonder why Dr. Patterson's smiling so big today. Once you have in front of you the chart, understand that chart meets all the accounting principles. You go to an accountant's book, this is the chart you're gonna see regarding budgets for Buncombe County Schools. So I'm gonna really oversimplify things, because this is a complex area. Now, since I've been Superintendent, since I've been Associate Superintendent, it has come up every time with the Commission questions, rightfully so, because it's not easy to understand. To be honest with you, it's not easy to understand for the Superintendent, but I'm gonna do my best with this. And what I want you to focus on is the committed funding line, and that's the fourth column that you see. And that particular funding for this year is $5,647,218. Now, the best way Now, the best way, and again, oversimplifying, I can say to you is, if, of course, the Baldwin household doesn't have anything close to this, more like $564, but that's the savings. The savings in an organization like Buckland County Schools, I think, pretty similar to county government, is flowing in and out, flows the key, because it's there for cash flow, and it's there for emergencies, but it always needs to be replenished. State law requires Buckland County government to have a certain percentage that's in this category, same reason. We're not required by law, but it's just good common sense. Good common sense, if you have a home budget, you're going to have that certain amount for When you look at the additional columns, I'm going to do my best to explain those, and realize that the budget is fluid. It changes from, in a 24-hour period. And why does it change? Because personnel can change. Retirements can come through, all different changes in personnel. Remember the slide that I presented earlier, and it is a very important slide, 90 percent of our operating budget is in personnel, so it can fluctuate. When you look under our fund balance columns, you're going to see non-spendable, and you'll also see that really the year that we had extra funding was in 2013, 14. That was the last year that we had a sizable amount of what we call, these are non-spendable funds, because they're dedicated, and they're dedicated in this case to pre-pays. So what happened in 1314? That's where we were able to actually pay our insurance fees for the subsequent year ahead of time. We did that before the end of the fiscal year. Ms. Frisbee, jump in and help me.
Health insurance.
And health insurance. So that was a prepaid. Since that time, you've seen that the pre-pays have moved to 1617, where that is blank. Under inventories, again, these are dedicated funds, not to be used. Any comment on inventories? No, inventories are inventories.
Correct.
When you look at restricted, again, state, by state statute, and I think that's true, maybe I think that's true of county government, you have a certain percentage, you can see that ours has been, has reduced, because it's on a percentage basis. And for fiscal year 1617, $291,133. I talked about committed funds, that's one month's operating expenses, that represents one-twelfth of our local budget. That's symbolically the piggy bank that you don't crack into unless you have to, and many times we have to dip in, then replenish to maintain that level according to our guidelines. And again, with cash flow, I could not imagine, we're the 13th largest school system in the state of North Carolina, I've, I've had this raised, well, why doesn't that amount of money just stay with the county? And if you need that money, just come and see us. I hope somebody's in an office somewhere 24/7 when we come knocking on the door, because we're going to be knocking a lot, just to function. We're a larger organization. It's efficiency, it's effectiveness. The question mark comes into a sign, and that's where it gets confusing. But we have assigned funding for subsequent years expenditures. So in other words, even though it's showing on this chart, and just specifically, $4,125,558, that for 1617 budget was already assigned for something in 1718, so it's not available. And that's where it does get somewhat confusing, but I'd go back to, again, simplifying that that savings, that amount that we need, cash flow purposes, that's there in case of emergency, thank goodness we've not had to tap into it, because then that does require us to go through our board to address the needs, and then you can see unassigned. And once again, back in 1314, that was a, a good year for us, and we actually did have unassigned fund balance. It wasn't going to be used initially for anything that was projected in the subsequent year's budget, but it was simply there. But since 1314, you can see where that category has gone. So it's zero.
Dr. Baldwin, on the, on the subsequent years expenditure, it looks like the last three years have been going down, as they had forecasted, or lower needs, and what, what, just give me, you know, a couple examples on what that type of expenditure that would be, as compared to the stabilization of the board policy amount?
What was used for subsequent budget, Deborah? I, I think you, you probably got several examples.
You set aside money to forecast needs for subsequent years, that's what it is, right?
Right.
Absolutely. That, that's basically a revenue stream that balances the next year's budget, and when we project the salaries and everything.
You would affectionately know it as appropriated fund balance.
Yes.
One of your favorite terms.
That is appropriated fund balance. We, we, the terminology is just different.
That's for the assigned or for the stabilization?
For the assigned subsequent years expenditure is the appropriated fund balance that we use to balance the next year's budget. So this, this is actually a line item in their 1718 budget, and it serves as the-
But you have, you have money now in the fund balance, right?
We have money that's set aside by the board policy 8100 as our piggy bank, but today, all that money's being used. Now, come June 30th, that number may change, but right now, that is the number that we have to use to balance our-
But Dr. Baldwin was talking about that in the fund balance, you have to use some money, then you can re, re-
That's right.
Put money back in. Where does that money come from to go back in?
It, it depends on, on lots of things. If you have changes in personnel, those coming out have a higher salary than those coming in, then you have a difference there. If you have a vacant position that's not filled for a little while, then you have, have a gap there. There's just a multitude of things that could change that.
A good example is a retirement that occurs during the school year. Retirement would represent 30, in most cases, 30-plus years, which would be at the highest point in salary. And again, generally speaking, generally speaking, that replacement's going to come in on a far lower salary scale, so that, that differential comes back in, it's called savings to us. And the other issue that can happen, we could have a, we, we could have a teacher go out on some type of, of medical leave, and after a period of time, you know, we're bringing a substitute in that is far less costly, or we may make a decision, Mr. Fryer, that, what, based upon our budget in that department, that may be a staffing position, we're just going to hold open until the end of the school year, until we have an adequate pool of, of applicants for the principal to select for. That's why the 90 percent is extremely important to realize with our budget, because as you start looking at all these changes in a system of 4,000-plus employees, full-time employees, that, that flow with just the human resources can happen on a daily basis.
I have a question. Um, and, and I agree, this stuff, it is complicated, and, and we have spent a lot of time talking about it for our own organization, trying to understand, you know, what do we really need? And it's, it's, it's been something I think we're getting a better handle on, I don't think we're totally there yet for us, so anyway, we're asking ourselves the same questions. One question is, for the, the 12 months, you know, of the year, are there predictable kind of highs and lows in where the fund balance will be, just based upon, I'm not sure with all the details of how, you know, your revenues, if they flow in exactly the same throughout the course of the year, or in your spending? Is there real predictable, kind of like, here's where we're at our highest, and here's where we're at our lowest each year, and talk us through that a little bit?
Yeah, the, the first half of the fiscal year is when we utilize all the fund balance. Oftentimes, if we're, you know, we have to carry on operations, whether we may not have the state money or not, they'll guarantee the salaries, but we have to pay people, so oftentimes, we may have to pay a amount of local funds, and then when we get the state money, we've got to, to refund the local. Oftentimes, we have insurance premiums, property insurance, things like that, that we have to pay upfront one time, usually that's in July, to keep those policies enforced, that's local money, so we really don't start putting back in the, the savings until the second half of the fiscal year.
So the, the, the third and fourth quarters are the, are the lowest, and then the first and second quarters tend to be more reserves?
Right, for, for us, it would be July through December is when we're utilizing all of that money, and then we start, as, as things change, and the fluid slows down a little bit, then we start increasing that number again.
But there's also key, going back to personnel again, there are key points in that year where retirements more often than occur than, than not, and that's just simply the way that the system's set up. And in this particular month, it, it is a financial advantage for a veteran to retire at that point. So that's, again, the personnel plays such a, such a hero. High school semesters, most of you have had high school students come through, remember we split that year, and so when you're looking at teachers, there tends to be, that loss would take place if there's a teacher that leaves, usually after that semester break. So that tends to play into when you've got a shift in funding. It's, it's, this is probably a bad example, but I've heard it from so many people, I'm beginning to believe it myself, it's like nailing Jell-O on the wall. It's, it's, it's difficult, but it's that flow and that, and it's fluid as this budget, and I think probably the county has some similarities, I would think.
You're probably high when we're low, I just thought.
So, just to be clear, so you're saying every year you spend your whole fund balance, and then reboot it up? Or do you, um-
We appropriate this amount right here, but we don't necessarily spend it all, but we really don't know how much we've spent until after our audit has occurred and we get the final numbers, because even though the fiscal year ends on June 30th, there are still things that we're taking care of in July, August, and September that happened in that fiscal year, so we have to put those back in there, and then when the auditors come and they review everything, that's usually when we know how much of our balance we use.
So what's the lowest your fund balance usually is, like at the worst, like the lowest?
Um, gosh, that's a good question. Um, I don't know, I would say under a million dollars at some point. It, it, like you said, it's just, it's the flow and the fluidity of everything that we do.
And once again, I'm back to that, to the big picture chart. When 60 percent of your funds operate your school system, it's based upon state funds, the state doesn't have a nice neat timeline that is consistent from year to year when that funding comes to us, and it varies. And so you may have, your, one year may look a little bit different in a certain area that's, that's very heavily in state funds. Local, much more consistency, because it's the, the access, I mean, it makes sense.
So I guess my point is, so at some point, your fund balance is only a million dollars?
It could possibly be, yes, at one moment in time, yes.
And is that typical, or?
Um, with the nature of this, yes. I mean, it doesn't stay there, but I would say that it has gone that low.
Yeah. I think it's, 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 it's a good question, because, I mean, I think we do want the schools to have the funds, that you don't need to come to us and have to say, hey, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, you know, we want you to run the, run the organization, but of course, at the same time, we don't want to, you know, just like for ourselves, we don't want to over-appropriate for it either, so just kind of figuring out, wow, you know, it actually does get down this low, not just once every 10 years, it, it's a regular, it happens regularly, I mean, to me, that, that's a pretty strong argument that it's not being over-appropriate, just sort of seeing how frequently it gets, you know, that tight, I think is, is important information, so any additional data on that I think would be welcomed.
I think so, but it would, yeah, if we saw, if you knew it was September, you know, because of, and I get it, you know, as far as when you receive your, your money, you've got to set some money aside, because when you get it from state, you get it later, and then you'll find out how mu, how much that might be. But it, it would be good to see how that is from month to month. It's just good information for y'all, probably for us too.
How do you get your state funds now?
It might.
How do you get your state funds now? Once a year, quarterly, monthly, or how? I did know at one time, but I don't now.
Yeah, we, we have to order money every, we order money every day, because we, we write checks every day. We, we do accounts payable checks every day. You order the money, you have a three-day window to spend that money, and if you don't spend it all, you have to send it back to the state. So, but we order money every single day, and then, of course, those orders are greater when we process payrolls. We process six payrolls a month, two for the semi-monthly, and then we have the teacher end of the month, P12, and I'm getting into weeds now, but, but we have to order money every single day.
Now, do you have a problem come July 1st, if they don't approve the budget until October 1st?
They guarantee the salaries that you pay, so, so you can order money for the salaries, but that's about it.
But the allotments still are-
Right, they'll-
Have to be requested.
Right, those-
We, we know how much they are, we're giving that information.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
But the final budget may not be there, but we, we, we order money every day.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Next slide, again, for those that appreciate bar graphs, again, the unassigned funds, that category is, is for the most part nonexistent. And then again, the, the percentage on the prepaid, and the larger percentage being in board policy, that, that one-twelfth of that one month's operating expenses. Okay, our proposal is going to represent a, again, from, from a big picture standpoint, it's a 5% increase of the previous year. I'll tell you that 3.6% of that is in salaries, benefits, some of that already determined by the state, and, let's see, we got the slide up, okay, four. This is certified personnel, primarily two areas, teachers and assistant principals. That 4% pay increase, and remember, when, when we say pay increase, this is reflective of the 14% of our total employees in Buckland County Schools, 14% are paid locally. Remember I said earlier that not every position is covered with state funds, far from, so that represents that 14%. So $694,315, we already know that to be a set figure, and this is base, I think it's base, only Ms. Frisbee, base, yes, that is relevant to teachers and assistant principals based upon the scale that's already been determined through the legislature. This is that following second, second year of that. The second proposal, and I think we're joined as well with Asheville City, for two reasons, we believe this is just, again, common sense to request this. We do anticipate that the state, who is going to begin their budget session next week, is going to look at some type of salary increase that will impact all state employees, especially impacting, which we've talked about earlier, our non-certified staff. We're estimating that to be 3%. Now, why is that, from my standpoint? I, I'll just, just put it on the table, it's an election year, number one, and number two, there is a revenue of a considerable, I think, $300 million that is there from the state. So we anticipate that that is, there's a likelihood that that's going to occur. So this is our best projection, both ourselves and the city, that this 3%- So this is our best projection, both ourselves and the city, that this 3% is, it's a projection. And again, the timing, the timeline, you hate to talk about crystal balls, but this is one of those because of the timeline and the dependence upon state funding and state decisions that may not be made until later in the summer. So that total is $1,422,539. And again, that is specific to human resources. Second area, this comes to you historically, it's come to you for decades, as the state each year looks at increasing the employer's matching retirement contribution, that's a percentage that's been increased. In this case, it's 17.13, and the latest information that we both received from DPIs, it's going to move to 18.44. There's an increase there. That's going to impact, the state will cover for state-paid staff, but there's an increase for, that needs to be matched for our local employees, that's $713,200. And then the health insurance premium, again, on an annual basis, that tends to go up. And so, once again, we're coming, asking for assistance for our locally paid employees to allow them to have that same coverage that we would for state-paid employees. And that's $167,320, total of $880,322. Again, this, in both cases, it's human resources, salary and benefits. This is new. I've thought about how to present this to you. And what I'd say to you is this, I've got 43 principals in Buncombe County School. If I brought them all in this room and I asked them to tell us, come to an agreement on one concern they have, most pressing issue out in our schools, they're probably going to use a different term than behavior health, they're going to say mental health. Kindergarten, all the way through high school. We need some help. This is an area of focus. It's also, as I see, an area that you continue to discuss, to talk and prioritize. We are asking for essentially three positions. The first is more of a coordinator's position for behavior, and we're going to use the term behavioral health because I think it better fits the need. Behavioral health and community engagement. That particular person, and you can read what Mr. Thompson, and he's certainly available because he's the, this is his department, he's coordinating an incredible amount of support services, but we need help. That person's primary role, David, in my opinion, is number one, connect the dots. Resources outside of the schools continue to dwindle, you know that, I've heard you talk about that. But we've got to connect them. We cannot do it alone with our, with our school psychologists, our counselors, our social workers. We depend upon that connection. And in many cases, when we're talking about behavioral health with students, it expands out to, we're putting a support network for the entire family, not just that student. That's very important to understand. I've learned that the hard way in the schools. This person would also be responsible for training. Many of our classroom teachers are asking for this type of training, how to handle the type of behavioral needs that are coming into their classes, and coming as early as kindergarten. Several of you have been in those kindergarten classes. Hard thing to put out in front of the public, but it's the reality, we need help. That's a leadership position, to work beneath Mr. Thompson. The second, I'm asking for two specialists. And this is to accompany already four specialists that we have out there working. Their primary role in the classroom, working side-by-side with the teacher, working side by side with the students. That's their job. Their boots on the ground, they're directly in the schools. Because if all we provide is training for teachers, that's, that's not going to complete the need. We already have four, we're paying for them out of Title, I think Title IV funds. We have six school districts. Our desire is to at least have one of these specialists for each of the six districts that is available for those schools in that particular district, simply through a phone call. And they're embedding themselves in classrooms. But that is a tremendous need that we have. And again, I've heard it from principals, I've heard it continuously for the past four years. This is a need, and it's time, we have got to do something about it because we're almost in crisis. You see the crisis mode in the community, and I know that because I hear you talk about it. You've had presentations in front of you from the community. What happens in that community comes into your schools. Like no bones about it. And the impact is on kids. If we can intercede, if we can address those needs early, the earlier we can address them. You've got an emphasis on pre-K, good job. The earlier we can address them, the better chance we have that we're going to be successful in having these kids graduate. That's a request, and my total on that, I guess my total, Deborah, is on the final sheet, so we'll, we'll pick that up. Graduation Initiative, you've had a number of presentations over the years, thanks to the support that was provided. As Ms. Frost says, this is support that's coming from the taxpayers of Buncombe County. Last year, our cohort graduation rate, four years, 86.5, highest we've ever had. And this little fact, since 2006, when Bill Murdock and I came before you and asked for assistance with that, we have reduced the dropout numbers by 57% since 2006. These are two important programs, important functions under Graduation Initiative, that we have been dependent upon grants, Sister Mercy Grant. We've run out of that grant. We actually ran out of it this past year. So we're having to find funds. This, this is essential to helping us graduate kids. The first is Twilight School, we do that over a four-week period, it's after school, it's up at our Nesbit Discovery Academy. The funding that we're asking for, by the way, is for staffing to, to provide that program. We have 50 to 60 students, that's not on your PowerPoint, but that's the impact per year. And it allows them to recover credits. And if they ever fall behind with credits at that high school level, it reduces directly their percentage chance of graduating, especially graduating on time. So this is an essential program. Mini-Master is essentially our summer school. It's our summer program. We run it from June to August. The impact is 200 to 275 students that go through that program. Again, it's course recovery, it's additional courses that are offered. We do everything we can, especially for fifth-year students, to make sure that they're going to get across that stage. We also, at the end of the program, we've had up to around 35, 36 students that actually graduate at the end of that summer school program. These are two essential services under Graduation Initiative to keep that drop, keep those dropout numbers low. We need some help with it. Grants are wonderful. You heard me say this about federal money. When, when stimulus came in, it's like the Marines hit the beach. The only problem is, we know the Marines are going to be leaving at some point in time. Same thing with grant funds. So we, we need some assistance with that. That's $65,000, and again, that's, that's staffing. This is a request that for the third year in a row, we've asked about textbooks. Again, this is something that was brought up by the commissioners several years ago. This is where we need this final phase in, this is math textbooks. We're moving to new math standards, these workbooks are very important. We feel very confident in terms of what's taking place in those math classrooms. This allows us for a system our size to have consistency. Textbooks, again, when you look at state funding, it's one of those areas that has been drastically reduced over the years. In fact, we went through several years where there were no textbook funds. So it's just slowly coming back up. Now, that's the final phase, $198,000. I think that essentially repeats what was asked the previous two years. This next request, you've heard presentations from Clark Wyatt, Alicia Riordan, Greg Israel has been involved in a lot of our efforts to, for energy, sustainability, energy conservation. We feel very good about the program that's, that's taking place. But let me tell you, the rebates, the light bulbs that we, we save money, we save money, but we're always subject to rates. Two things we don't control, and that's energy rates, and we don't control Mother Nature. And we've gone through a doozy of a winter with Mother Nature, I assure you. So we're asking for $378,000 to assist us with these rate increases to get us back on. Again, I feel confident that in the future, over the years, we're going to continue sort of being very fluid to balance out with the energy rebates and the savings that we're going to have from, from all the efforts that we're making, both city, county, and I think AB Tech as well. And I just want to show you a chart that, that may hopefully gives you some, some comfort to some extent. And that is, I want you to focus on the, the bar line. Because what I think it shows, and remember, this is since 2006, we've added four intermediate schools. So we've added facilities. But because of the efforts we've made with energy efficiency through our maintenance department, we've been able, for the most part, to keep that bar pretty steady and to keep it in somewhat of a slight decline. If you look at the last spike, that represents this past winter. When you look at what happened in January, February, where the spike is the highest, and you backtrack into November, it's been a long winter, and this has impacted us as well. So when you consider the impact of that along with additional facilities that we've opened, we're keeping both nostrils above water, but they can, they can go under at any time. So that's a request that we're making. Summary, proposed increase continuation, $2,302,861. Proposed increased expansion, $260,418. And then sustaining operation, $641,000, $3,204,279. And I said earlier, it represents, I think, a 5% increase over, over the previous, previous year. Budget timeline, I always include this because it's a thorn in the side. When you, when you consider, again, our dependence, heavy dependence, 60% upon state funding, we come to you with local fund requests, but we don't yet know really what the state funding issues are going to be, what the final budget's going to look like. So we do our very best. And some of this, in all honesty, is projecting the best that we can on available information. So I've shared that timeline with you. And then finally, I want to conclude, just bringing up a slide that shows your priorities. And I think we're aligned. I think you're going to find that all three of our school systems are aligned with those. Affordable housing, we talked about the teacher campus, I think that's going to be expanded in the future. Clean and renewable energy, again, the efficiency, the increase, and what we're trying to do out in our school buildings, the sustainability piece, diverse community workforce, this is a challenge for us, we continue to focus on it. When Ms. Lopez is out in those job fairs, we're doing, we're doing a, a true focus on making sure that we have staff that are in front of our students that reflect those students. And when you look at Buncombe County Schools, you're going to see that 16, almost 17% of our students are Hispanic-Latino. You're going to see 6.5% that, that are African-American. Largest percentage, Caucasian. We have Asian Pacific, we have Indian. We need to make sure to the best of our ability that we are putting professionals in front to model for all of those kids. And it's a challenge, a challenge especially here in western North Carolina. Early childhood education, you may know this, we have 15 pre-K sites within our school system. Those are Head Starts. We also have three childcare centers at our high schools. We have a childcare center at Community High School. Justice resource, resource support, we have Sheriff Duncan, had a very successful on-track leadership program. But we also have the misdemeanor diversion program that's been put in place, very successful. David, just some quick stats on that.
We've had about, about 50 to 60 folks who have referred to the diversion program, and about 30, between 35 and 40 have completed that without further charges being implemented there through that diversion program. And we also know that with the raise the age that is coming to 2019, that there will require some school justice partnerships that will also result in a lot of diversion activities that are happening at that point. So that, over the next year, planning with Department of Juvenile Justice or those school justice partnerships will be a big part of the role in our department.
The last priority that you have is opioid addiction. And I will tell you that we deal with the impact of the opioid addiction. We deal with the children of many of those addicts. We deal with parents. We've had parents come into our building that we've had to contact 911 to provide Narcan. What Mr. Thompson and his staff have put in place with compassionate schools, with resiliency training, there's ever been a time that it's needed, beginning in kindergarten for so many of our kids, it's now. But I think, again, that is a connection. I think at all of these levels, we connect with what your priorities as a commission are. So with that, I hope I wasn't too long-winded. And any questions that you might have?
I don't think we have any more right now, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to opportunity to discuss our information with Asheville, for Asheville City Schools. Today I have with me our Board Chair, Ms. Sean DeSanford, and our Executive Finance Officer, Ms. Charlotte Sullivan. We will begin by looking at our average daily membership and enrollment. As you can see, we have been on the steady increase with our student enrollment. DPI does provide projections for us as well, but they do not add in the projections of pre-K because pre-K is not part of the student population that's counted in North Carolina. So again, as you see, our population of students has been on the increase since 2010. And just to look there, you'll see that our increase is at about 20.3%. And we have a detailed account there of how many projected enrolled kindergarten students there could be, elementary, middle, and high school as well. Just to take a moment to look at our budget challenges for 2018, 2019. We are always looking at our categories of our folks that we employ. As you can see, we have our teacher assistants, central office staff, looking at textbooks as well, supplies and materials, as well as our technology funding. And again, as you can see, that over the years, that, that amount has steadily decreased Looking at major position allotments and those changes there, classroom teachers, instructional support staff, as well as building administration. And CTE, that's something separate, that's its own funding source. I just wanted to show that that change was there as well. Regarding class sizes, as...
Can you back up one slide?
Sure.
Sorry. Your, your career in technical has jumped up a little bit, you want to comment about that, a little plug in for us?
Charlotte, just a little... Charlotte, just a little bit about, I'll let you kind of add to that a little bit for the CTE.
Yes, the state did increase the funding for CTE last year, so that's why you said the increase to that category.
Good, thanks.
And dealing with our class sizes, in Ashville City Schools, we have maintained the status that the state has provided, so our class sizes still run in accordance with their recommended class change sizes. However, those were not put in place this year, but our class sizes did maintain as they had requested in the past, and we'll continue to do that as well. In case they decide that those changes will be in effect one day, we want to still adhere to those as much as possible. And just to look at some of the other areas, Montford North Star Academy, this is the first year of existence for this school. Its focus is on science, technology, engineering arts, and math. At this time, we have just under eighty students that are there. Projected enrollment for next year will be about eighty students again. In the third year of the existence for the school, it will be at about eighty. So within three years, we will see about two hundred and forty students at that school. And it will eventually serve grades six, seven, and eight. Next year, it will serve sixth grade and seventh grade as well. So we are in the process of expanding the enrollment there for Montford North Star Academy. Looking at Ashville Primary School, this is a school that has a Montessori focus, it's one of our magnet schools, all of our schools do have a magnet theme, the theme there is Montessori, it's a child-centered approach there. Also, students have free activity, choosing and selecting their choice of learning for the day. It also focuses on free movement in the school. So this is the first year of the Montessori concept, and it will expand to grades three for next year. So at this time, it has kindergarten, first, and second grade, and mixed classes are there. It's not just a kindergarten class, a first grade, you have mixed levels of learning at the school. You may have a classroom with K-one and two there. And that's a concept that we're very proud of, we've seen some great benefits from mixed learning at that school. And moving on with some of our other funding priorities and challenges. One area that we would like to focus on for the upcoming year is Ashville City Learning Program. This is a program that would be housed at Montford North Star Academy. We've designated a hallway just for this learning program, and it will focus on helping our students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve. So a little bit about the program, it will be an alternative approach to learning. Some of our students may need some adjustments in their classes. We have students who have work schedules that would permit them to take a couple of classes at this learning site. We also have some students who have their own children, and this would work around their childcare needs. So we're trying to meet those needs of that time schedule for our students, and really trying to maintain our students so that they can, you know, continue on with their graduation efforts, but want to provide some other alternatives to that learning approach. Because it will be housed at Montford North Star Academy, we want to make sure that we're able to share some of the resources, specifically looking at people resources there. Because we are increasing the number of students, we would have to increase the number of teachers there as well. So we would ask for some teachers there, looking at the media coordinator, it would share between North Star, Montford North Star Academy, and the learning program would also share the media coordinator, so that would be a funded position there. Looking at the clerical and bookkeeper, we would need a person there to handle that. Social worker would be needed as well, a counselor, and we would need someone to oversee that program for Ashville City Learning Program. And some other benefits to the program would be homebound instruction, that would be a location if students weren't able to go to the regular school throughout the day, they may have, for example, have some other challenges that meet the needs for homebound services. Some of our students may break a leg or something like that, and they may need to have an alternative learning setting that would not allow them to stay in school for the entire day. And they would be able to come there, receive that instruction for a set amount of time with a certified staff member. And again, they would share some of the same people there, media coordinator, social worker, counselor, those would be shared resources with the two schools.
Now, that's not going to be kids who are primarily disciplined problem?
No, it would not be.
Good, because it's been a problem in the past.
Just if they need just some type of alternative learning, if that full regular day does not meet their learning needs, this would be a place for them. We have some students, as Dr. Baldwin mentioned, some severe emotional needs that sometimes prevent them from going to school the entire day, some social needs. And because we would have that social worker there, that counselor there, to provide some intense opportunities for them to transfer back into the regular setting or to maintain being there, that would be needed. So it would not be for disciplined students. Looking at Montford North Star Academy, it is a middle school, and it implements the middle school concept. You have four teachers there at the middle school at this time, and they serve our students in the four content areas of English or English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. Because we're adding another grade level, seventh grade, we would need the same number of teachers so that our students can make sure that they are afforded those opportunities with their learning. Would like to increase the position of art, because we would have more students there who would be taking art classes, music, and PE. So it would be the total package for a middle school program there as well. And you see the increased positions there, it would be the arts, we really value the arts in our schools. Looking at some funding priorities for Ashville High School. A counselor for grades eight and nine, just a dedicated counselor. Some of the things, again, that we've seen in looking at our middle school students and working with our ninth grade students, it's a critical moment to transfer from that eighth grade year to the high school year. And really want to focus on helping our parents with that transfer from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. So we'd like that person to really focus on helping our eighth grade students, talking to them about the transition to high school and preparing for that early on, instead of waiting until the summer or right before the beginning of the year. We really think that's vital, that they become accustomed to what's going to happen, and so that foreshadowing can really help with that transition to the high school, even with their academics, the extracurricular activities, and really feel like that will help them whenever they move to the ninth grade. So that counselor would only serve the students in eighth grade and serve the students in ninth grade. It's also about building those relationships, and students really connect with people who know about their next level or their next transition level, and really want to provide that stable person in their life so they can transfer from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. And so we'd like that counselor to really focus on those grade levels of students as well.
Question, do your salary amounts include their health benefits, or is that just full pay?
Is that a total? That's with benefits, so that's their total worth as an educator. A counselor at our AHA program, we're looking at revamping that program and renaming our AHA program, that is for our students who have experienced some challenges with their behavior. We really need a counselor there to also assist them with managing their feelings, their emotions, and have found that with the mental health state that we're in, that that person could be a vital person in the role as they are transitioning through high school. And a need for a custodian at Ashville High School, it is a very large campus, the buildings are very unique, and the amount of time that's needed to make sure that those buildings are clean, we really need that extra custodial staff and to maintain those grounds as well. That's really been a focus of ours in looking at the cleanliness of the buildings, and really feel like an additional custodian to make sure that our students attend a safe and clean environment would be beneficial to them at Ashville High School. I look at Ashville Primary School, we've talked about this earlier. At this time, Ashville Price, Ashville Primary School has one administrator that monitors the preschool part of the building, and then there's another part, that K-three soon-to-be building there. So really, it's a unique building where it's pre-K through three. But we have seven classrooms that are preschool that are in Ashville Primary School, in addition to the four classrooms in our other elementary schools that are also pre-K. So when you're thinking about that leader who has to make sure they stay in the building, manage the pre-K program, then manage the K-two program currently, then go to the other sites, that can become cumbersome on one person. And so we are in need of making sure that we have a principal or a building leader for the primary side and a building leader for the preschool side. And so in recognizing that, we are trying to make sure that we have that taken care of at that school site, to make sure we have two administrators there. Adding two teachers as well, because we are increasing enrollment at Ashville Primary School. And the enhancement teacher, we offer music, art, and PE, and want to make sure that our students at Ashville Primary also have opportunities to engage in music, art, and PE as well. So before I move on, that's a lot about the schools, do you have any questions about those specific funding recommendations?
Have you all historically had counselors embedded in schools at this level, or are you, is that a new approach to increase access to counseling?
We do have counselors, and so the need for more, just because of our mental health needs, we've just seen that mental health need, that rise there in just that need for our students. But because, let me see, let's see what slide specifically. So the counselor in the AHA program, the students, they do not have a counselor dedicated to them only, because we want to make sure that their schedules are correct. If there's an EC student that's in there, AIG, any level of student, we want to make sure that they are taking the appropriate classes and getting the credits that they need to graduate. So we don't have a counselor that's dedicated only to that program at this time. But you do have some at Ashville High School, and we have some at the middle, and we have one at the elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
Let me be clear on the counselors, because I know you do, you are fortunate having supplemental tax, and a lot of the, I paid from that, because you have assistant principals in every school, right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And you have counselors, how many do you have at Ashville High?
Counselors?
Now?
There's one dedicated to Silsa, and so there would be three counselors at Ashville High School.
And how about the other schools? You have counselors in all schools, right?
And so at the elementary, you would have the one, and at the middle school, Ms. Sullivan, I think we have three? Three. And our goal would be, at the high school, to have a counselor at each grade level, so that one counselor is for ninth grade, tenth grade, eleven, and twelve. And Silsa has about four hundred students, and really feel like that one counselor could manage those one hundred students. But because we want that counselor to pick up eighth grade and ninth grade at the high school, it's just important not to leave that middle level out, and to kind of make sure that we have that transition from middle school to high school. Just want to educate our parents on things that are upcoming in high school that they may not have thought about. And so that counselor would be for all eighth grade, just, it's like a transitional counselor.
So who navigates with the students, what their career paths would be, whether they go AB Tech, whether they go to a four-year school, whether they go, does that fall on the counselor?
Yeah, the counselors really help with that, they do.
So typically, in high school, how many, how many students would one counselor be responsible for giving that guideline to?
It'd be by grade level, so it would be two hundred and fifty-plus students possibly.
For one counselor?
But at Silsa, they just have the one counselor for about four hundred students. So if you really look at Ashville High School, that's about fourteen hundred students in that building.
Divided by three counselors, four counselors?
Four.
And that's for that kind of an academic counselor? Because I guess when I was hearing counselor, maybe I was thinking of a different kind of counselor, can we clarify what we're talking about?
So it would be a school counselor, and that person would be providing some academic recommendations, looking at colleges, looking at scholarships for the students. When you get into those behavioral needs, that can be more explained with a social worker.
Right, because they seem like these are different jobs?
Those are two different, yes, they are.
And how many social workers?
Are those two different jobs, or does someone get trained to do?
They would be two different jobs, those are classified as two different jobs, yes. Because the counselor is more the educational side, but there are also some emotional needs that can be met through that, especially at the elementary level, they are used a lot for that emotional and behavioral side. It just depends on the level.
So walk me through what kind of classmates of harmony, what kind of emotional support does they get, or are they social workers get?
Dr. Howard is our Director of Student Support Services, and we have a team of social workers that provide support to our students at Ashville Middle School. So just depending on the time of day, even still now, that team is available to make sure that they can go to the school and provide any emotional support, any type of support that's needed for that student. We also partner with Family Preservation, and they also help us in providing support to the students. But at the time of the tragedy, Bonham County was very nice and gracious to allow some of their counselors and other support staff to come over and to provide just that listening ear and that intense support for our students. And our Board Chair, she's a background in mental health, so she may want to add to the type of support that we do provide to our students.
So basically, Dr. Howard just called in the support that night, he rounded up his team, contacted Dr. Baldwin and Mr. Thompson, and they sent over additional counselors. We had a lot of community support, where additional counselors within the community came in, and we already had people assigned to the different schools, so they met the students and the staff there at the schools, they were there four o'clock in the morning, ready to meet the students, and they provided support for the rest of that week and the following week, and they still have groups that they have for those students that continue to need support.
So we have a community response, trauma response team, and we share, whether it's county, county schools, city schools, everybody shares resources when there's an event, and there's the notifications.
He has his own crisis intervention team that he calls on when that happens.
Would you say that if there's a troubled student, they're more likely to confide in a social worker, counselor, or a school resource officer?
I think it's because of their background and their training that they have, that they are able to have certain types of discussions with students. That's not my training, and so my training is teaching, administration, so I would be able to share a different type of information or have a different kind of conversation with students. But because they're trained in those areas, they can have some deep conversations and provide ways for students to handle their emotional trauma.
Honestly, I was confused when I answered the question, so do you think there's more of a benefit to students to have more behavioral help, social workers than a school resource officer? Who do you think they confide in? I mean, and if both are different?
It could be both, it actually could be both. Our resource officers have done a phenomenal job of building relationships with our students. I've seen them in action, and couldn't ask for finer people to work at our schools. Then you have that emotional side, that behavioral side, so I couldn't choose, I think they're both extremely needed. They really are. Let's examine some of our district needs. A need for a social worker, I think Dr. Baldwin said it best, we have students who have some needs that are just where a social worker is the best person to handle those needs, or behave, some type of behavior support person. We've just seen and have experienced a lot of students who have traumatic needs, and we need some resources to help those students deal with those feelings and their emotional needs there. SRO, again, those people are extremely helpful to us. We've had lots of safety needs in trying to make sure that our schools are secure, and we really feel that like they are safe places. As you know, our country has experienced some recent tragedies, and we want to be ahead of those, we want to be proactive and make sure that they don't happen here in our system, and so we really feel like an additional social, SRO will help us with that. Pre-K is a focus, a need for an EC pre-K teacher, we really believe that anytime students can enter educational settings early on, that that will only benefit their educational career, early learning is certainly a plus. Nurses, helping with healthcare of our students. Lots of our students need conversations around their health needs, and they need to know where to go to really make sure that they are taken care of themselves. And so just seeing that need for that, and the behavior assistant in helping our students monitor their emotions and how to handle those. We have Um, we have students that cannot control themselves, and we need someone to help students guide them in their thinking and how to help them control themselves in our school settings, and that will only help them as adults in the adult world.
Who pays the SROs? Is that the school system, the Sheriff's Department, police?
So we have our contract.
We have contracts with Ashville.
With Asheville Police Department. And they have been phenomenal. Anytime we've called on their assistance for anything, um, they've been right there with us for us and have been a great resource with our safety needs.
So they, they are members of, they're police department employees?
Yes, they were at one time.
Okay, thanks.
And that's helpful, because they know the law. And we've not really experienced, um, um, any interactions of, you know, charging our students with, you know, criminal acts unless it's absolutely necessary. Um, we've not experienced any of that at all. So they have really and truly been there as a resource for our students and to meet our safety needs. Um, looking at our state mandated increases, as you have heard earlier, um, salary increases are on the rise there with the state. And so those are some of our projected costs with our increases in, um, salary and projected benefit increases as well. Also, we have retirement and hospitalization rates that are also noted there. And they have seen a steady, a steady increase since two thousand fourteen. Facility maintenance options, um, any way that our school districts can partner on any facility, um, maintenance, we are open to that, and we would like to explore and review any options there. So any recommendations that you have? Dr. Baldwin and I would, um, enjoy talking about those conversations, um, because we partner together on lots of things now, and so we welcome the opportunity to partner on any facility and maintenance needs between our two school districts. And looking at our local current expense funds and other specific revenue funds. This is the requested amount, the one point two million plus there. And just some projected amounts from the, um, district supplemental tax and the projected sales tax collections. Charlotte, do you want to mention anything about this slide? Any other questions? So some of the things that we're doing to retain and make sure that we have high-quality employees. We've already talked about the living wage. I understand that it was addressed in sixteen seventeen. Um, recently, we increased our salary supplement to all of our employees by point five percent, and our employees do receive their supplement one time a year. Most of them do. We do have a minority recruitment plan. We really feel like, um, we want to continue to diversify our school system. We do have diverse students with diverse needs, but it's beyond the color. Um, so we want, um, any staff member that has a diverse background and who meets the qualifications to be part of our school system. Uh, recently, we had our job fair at Claxton Elementary over the weekend. We had over one hundred applicants who were there. Um, they were interviewed on the spot, and we were able to make job offers to about eight, um, potential people to join our school system. We had a few minority candidates that were there as well. And so we continue to strive and make efforts to try to attract some of our minority candidates. That is our goal, that will continue to be our focus. Um, we are looking at our teacher assistants. We do have quite a few teacher assistants who are minorities and who have, um, college backgrounds and college educations. They also have, um, two-year degrees. And so we're looking at some conversations with them about, you know, what do you want to do, um, with our school system? They've been in our system ten, fifteen, twenty years and have been a great asset, but want to challenge them and ask them and, and talk about, would you be interested in a teaching position? So we are in the process of talking to some of our minority candidates who are teaching assistants about continuing on with their education.
That's very interesting. Could you drill down a little bit more on that? And, um, we're, uh, just tell us more about what you're, you're hearing as you ask that question to teacher's assistants and...
So most recently, one of our elementary school teachers has a biology degree, and she is a teacher in one of our EC classrooms. Uh, once we found that out, um, she's done a great job and really can serve as a teacher leader in that classroom. So we've had a conversation with her about going back to school, getting her lateral entry degree, and so that is an option that she is going to explore next year. So we want to have those individual conversations. We're talking to principals first, and then we're talking to our teacher assistants.
Huh. We've been talking a lot about some of the challenges in identifying, uh, pre-K teachers. And that's an interesting, maybe there's some ways to connect those dots and, and get some of those conversations going.
I think at the time, when you hire people and, and you see their credentials and it's only for that job,
Right.
you sometimes forget when a couple of years go by that forgot they had some certification. So we're taking a look at our employees again to kind of see what type of, you know, certifications they have, or we're trying to see what are their expectations for leadership in our district.
That's great.
I'm glad to hear you're doing that. Because when I was on the school board, we had one, and I stumbled on this, talking to him, and the superintendent didn't have a clue. We had a, a teacher's assistant who graduated from Chapel Hill, a Morehead Scholar.
Wow.
Today, he's one of their top teachers. I won't call him anything, I'll stop there.
We have some great teacher assistants. I mean, we have a lot with a four-year degree, and it just may need to be a lateral entry experience that we need to talk to them about. And if they're happy doing what they're doing, that's fine, but we really want to explore some other options for them if they're open to it.
That's cool.
Um, central office, um, let's see. So except for Asheville Middle School and Isaac Dixon, and we've talked about that retrofitting of the LED lighting, um, in a previous session. And again, our focus is still on early childhood learning. Um, that's a passion of mine, I really want to see. If we could have one wish in Asheville City Schools, we would want all of our students who are eligible for pre-K to be in a pre-K classroom, age three and four. We would want them in any type of early learning program. And most recently, we've connected with the Christine Avery Learning Center. Um, that's phenomenal, that's just another learning opportunity for our students, and it's connecting them to the schools and to our district. And so we're very excited about that. We really feel like our local supplement has been an incentive since we have increased it by point five, most recently, percent. But as you can see, from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, um, the supplement has changed. So just wanted to provide you with that diagram there. And this is for all of our staff members. It includes teachers, teacher assistants, principals, maintenance, custodial staff. Um, so it's for everyone, our, um, supplement is. And just to look at teacher salaries, um, as you know, um, teachers have a hard job, but it's probably the best job, but they do need to be compensated. And we're looking at the national average of teachers. We looked at the average teacher pay for North Carolina. And so we wanted just to break down what would a teacher make, uh, in Asheville City Schools if they had their bachelor's degree, ten years' experience? There's their annual salary, and with our supplement, there's their total right there. But again, um, that price is probably not enough for our teachers. Um, we really feel like they do an outstanding job, and hopefully one day, those increases will be seen across the state. Just have another example of a teacher with twenty years of experience with a bachelor's degree, uh, and with our local supplement, that would be their total salary there, just to give you an idea of what a teacher makes. And as we are looking at our veteran employees, I guess we, we just dig down into our employees, because this is our largest group of people where our resources go to. This is where a, a lot of our salaries are, our, our funding is. And so just want to make sure that we're doing right and the best by all of our, our employees. So just wanted to take a look at also our veteran employees. Um, and currently, we have forty-one employees in our system with twenty-five or more years of state service, and twenty-two of those are teachers. So just always want to highlight our teachers and what they do for us, and just want to keep and monitor that situation. Hiring incentives. Um, as you know, in education, math teachers and exceptional children's teachers are hard to find. And because we know that, we are now offering a sign-on bonus of two thousand dollars if they are a qualified math teacher or a qualified exceptional children's teacher. Um, we know that's a minimal amount, but we would certainly like to increase that one day. But this is our first time exploring this, and hopefully, uh, we'll see more math teachers in our area. We'll see more exceptional children's teachers, and hopefully, they will have a diverse background. So we have to invest something to get what we want, and we really feel like this will be a good investment this year. And looking at our fund balance, and Dr. Baldwin has done an excellent job explaining fund balance. Um, just looking at the amounts that have been appropriated, uh, for us since two thousand sixteen seventeen, up until most recently. Any questions on our fund balance? And where does the money go? As you can see, about eighty-one percent.
Where does the money go?
Went away. Well, to our people, because they are the most important, um, part of this budget process here. We need them to educate our students. And so a large part of our budget does go to our people, um, to our employees in Asheville City Schools. And as you can see, the state, about seven percent, um, federal, about one percent. Right. Yeah. And then our fund balance is at about eleven percent that is dedicated to. And then that's our total initial local budget there at the bottom. And just looking at our revenue sources there. Um, we are, you know, constantly in competition with our charter schools, private schools. Um, and so we're always monitoring, um, the number there. Just trying to make sure that we keep a, a count of that ADM that's there. And so projected for two thousand nineteen would be fifteen point sixty-three.
Why is it down silently?
Charlotte, you want to speak to that?
This is our share of the revenue from county with, uh, Buncombe County Schools. So it is, uh, our charter schools are projected to be more next year. So that makes both of our funding sources go down, Buncombe County Schools as well as Asheville City Schools.
And last year, how many students did we have return from the charter schools? About twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty students returned from the charter school. So that added back to our ADM.
Okay, so it's the percentage of students in Buncombe County that go to the city schools? That's what this chart is?
No, that, this chart is our share of the local appropriations split between Buncombe County Schools.
Thank you, got it now. So it doesn't mean your population, doesn't mean your, your student population has gone down as a percentage? There's basically correlated?
Yeah.
It's the average, that would be.
Okay, so because, um, there's a higher percentage of students in charter schools or homeschooling, that's why that number is forecasted to go down?
I think to Dr. Patterson's point, it's a moment in time, so, but it's sad. If kids come in later in the year, it doesn't...
Wasn't, wasn't one of the charts we saw a little while ago though predicting a multi-year continuing growth of the city school district population?
It did, and then, um, DPI had projected us lower this year, but I don't know that those projections could be right, because we've seen a steady increase since two thousand ten with our enrollment of students.
Right, I mean, that's why I asked, it's just been going up and up. And the other chart showed it continuing to go up, so this is maybe, whatever, we'll see.
It's just a projection as of now. And we're in the process of enrollment, so we'll have some firm numbers after the first twenty days of school. All right, looking at our capital outlay. As you know, um, we have, um, the window project that's going on at Jones Elementary School, and we are very excited about that. And Charlotte, do you want to speak to our capital lottery funding that we applied for?
Yes, we applied for lottery funding to fund the windows at, uh, R.B. Jones, so we're waiting to hear from the DPI about approval of that lottery application.
So do we, uh, do we have to, do we have to approve that? Does that come down?
Think of it as lottery funds, don't, don't the schools get to just decide that on your own? It's just the, um...
The county commissioners and the Board of Education have...
It really comes to you on consent.
I thought we had, yeah.
But it's not, it's not the, um, school capital fund commission, it's not that same revenue. We're just separate from that. Yeah, right.
And then looking at our major projects and critical needs. Montford North Star Academy, the repair of the wall, we've had conversations about that. Um, the hot water lines there at the primary school, and repairing the masonry wall at Asheville Primary School. Again, the HVAC at Jones and the roof project there at the school. And I think our HVAC has been installed. I'm very excited about that. In the process, where's Greg? Is it in the process or has it?
Jones, the roof is complete, and the HVAC is just underway.
Um, and so those were our projects that have been funded by Buncombe County Government, Asheville High School, Montford North Star Academy, projects. And Asheville High School is coming along. Um, we were shared, information was shared last night at our board meeting that most of the front is done, and so you won't see a lot of construction going on at the front of the building. They're now at the back of the building, um, completing their construction projects. Any questions or comments?
I see the county is basically helping to refurbish the city and try to bring it back up. We've had enough city schools go down totally over the years. And so I would like to see the county and the city myself personally come together and be able to work to make sure these city schools are around longer than they are at present.
And again, we're willing to entertain any type of collaboration like that, absolutely.
We've done, our schools and stuff, they've done a good job in the county to make sure it all works. We've seen schools that had to be torn down that could have probably been safe for a while long. But the main thing is, the better we keep them, the longer we'll be able to do it. And, uh, very obviously, on the, uh, we're here to do a very good job on the building, try to make sure everything works. My personal thing is I'd like to see, you know, what they're doing over at Asheville High and other schools, be able to work and come along so it's a benefit to the city.
You know, I'm glad to hear you're having a conversation about the maintenance part of facilities, because I know what you've done in consolidating the buses, and I really think it would be a good job, a good opportunity for us now, seeing what needs to be done with buildings in the city and what has been done in the county for us to consider merging the facilities, you know, maintenance and all. Because I really think that would save us in the long. And we do a better job of keeping our facilities to build.
Thank you very much. All right. Um, and finally, for our education, we need to be, Dr. Dennis King with AD Tech. Thank you for being with us, Dr. King.
Hey, fella, how you doing? Nice, thank you.
Everybody in the room.
Flash drive.
Do you have?
I do, I mean I do, I do, I think it's, I mean I don't agree with it, but I do think that, I do think that's a lot of the thought process there.
Except for in the back.
Yeah, I do. I'm, I'm always in a, like, I can't see right there, but, oh, right, it's just spiraling out so fast, we don't really totally understand what's going on, so it makes me hurt, like, just how quickly it's changed, you know, so I'd like to kind of go slowly. I think you're, I think you're right, it's really, yeah. It's your fault.
And begin, because one of my presenters has a 3:30 meeting.
All right, it's good.
And he'll be leaving just as soon as he presents. I thought that I'd try to do something different this year for this budget presentation, so what I, is the mic on at all?
I think you speak a little bit closer into it.
I thought what I'd try to do is show you how AB Tech aligns with our services with your strategic priorities. And so the booklet that we passed out to you is a coverage of what we have done in the last few years to really to meet and align with your strategic priorities. I'm not going to go in order because Michael Carter has something, has an appointment at 3:30 and I want to get him out of here to do that, so I'm going to ask Michael to come up and deal with your strategic priority number five. Now you'll, you'll notice there that I've got graduation rates in our various programs. These are people who have completed these programs, but I don't want you to think at all that the completers are the only people who are working. In many of these circumstances, the people get a job before they finish with AB Tech. They take their, their instruction out and are highly successful at their employment. So, Michael, come on up. Michael is our coordinator for the SNAP program at the college, and he'll tell you a little bit about what he does there.
Yes, we got to lean into the mic. Yeah, I want to give this stat. Good afternoon, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it. I'm going to talk about STEP. STEP stands for Skills Training Employment Program. So STEP is a collaborative partnership between AB Tech and Buncombe County Health and Human Services to provide our recipients of food assistance, who we call the opportunity population, with access to education and training programs to increase access to sustainable employment and self-sufficiency. STEP is a first-in-the-state partnership geared to provide innovative workforce and education-focused solutions to poverty in Buncombe County. Our program effectively utilizes the pooled resources of AB Tech in Buncombe County along with local nonprofits to provide a comprehensive continuum of care. Specifically, the STEP program works with SNAP, formerly known as Food stamps, recipients within Buncombe to offer guidance and financial support in attending and successfully completing AB Tech courses and programs for up to one year with an option to renew for a second year. Clients have the option of participating in occupational skills courses, and those are training-based courses like Nurse Aid One. They also have the option to participate in employment, training, HSC, which is high school equivalency, basic skills courses, and the STEP Career Resource Center, which is an HRD employability lab. That's where we help folks with resumes, cover letters, interview skills, and we hold regular hiring events. On the 25th, we brought back the annual job fair to the Eddington Center, something that had been gone for a couple of years. So since the program inception in November of 2016, participants have completed over 150 courses through continuing education and curriculum-based courses. Additionally, 85 participants in our program have gained employment at an average wage rate of $11.37 an hour. And the reason why this, that number is important is before we joined in with this partnership with Buncombe County Health and Human Services, the average wage rate of participants in the employment and training program was actually $8.95. So we, within the span of less than 18 months, have had a almost $2.50 increase in the average wage of folks who enter into our program. So that's a statistic, you know, after only 18 months, we're very, very proud of. We expect this number to increase as our program continues because we're shifting towards a living wage model. So our goal is to get folks who are entering our top program at an average wage rate of $13 an hour. Our model of proactive services based on client choice rather than prescriptive services delivered through a perception of client needs, highlights our service value and sustainability as a cutting-edge model soon to be adapted throughout the country. Every dollar spent towards STEP initiatives, whether it's tuition, books, materials, fees, or supportive services, is well spent, and the money that does come into our program is spent on STEP participants and reimbursable up to 50% through the USDA. So those are all of the facts and, and you know, the, the statistics, but what I really wanted to share with you guys is the stories. You know, we've had folks come through our program who were receiving food assistance, went through training programs, and then became income maintenance caseworkers at Buncombe County, changing not only their life, but the lives of their families and their communities. Additionally, you know, we sometimes get a little bit caught up in who's receiving SNAP and who's receiving food assistance and our assumptions on what's happening with that person that is receiving assistance. And I think our program is really a testament to the fact that when you provide an opportunity, people thrive. And we're not just helping people with food, which is a vital and essential resource, we're providing opportunity. And our program, as I said, all clients that enter our program is based on choice and voice. There are over 150 different continuing education courses clients can take advantage of. We walk clients through that process and make them the leaders in that process in accessing those courses. And after they graduate, we facilitate and connect them with local employers. We've worked with Mission Health, Mayhem, Biata, tons of different great employers who support the work that we do. And additionally, just, just to briefly wrap up, I want to tell the story of Monica. She's one of our participants, changed the name to protect confidentiality course. Monica entered STEP in November 2017 with multiple barriers, including housing insecurity, unemployment, and transportation needs. She enrolled in the next available Nurse Aid One course, starting in January of 2018. STEP was able to assist her with paying for her tuition, books, materials, and uniform fees because she could not afford her own. Despite multiple setbacks in her housing and transportation-related needs, Monica persevered and she finished her Nurse Aid One course in February of 2018. Monica attended interviews for CNA courses while she was, for CNA jobs while she was in the course, and she was able to get on it with Biata at $13 an hour. And we didn't stop there. The education navigator that worked with her referred her to local community resources around car repair, housing, and further case management needs, and access supportive services funds available through AB Tech to help wrap with some of the things that came up, because you know, a lot of things come up sometimes. So the remarkable thing about this client is that she went from being homeless to making a living wage in a matter of months through the help of STEP, referral agencies, and her own self-determination. This is just one of the many client stories that are a testament to the influence of education access and support towards completion. So we thank you for the assistance and the help that you guys provide us. And just briefly, this isn't my program area, but I do want to say, you know, we're really also proud of the partnership we have with the Justice Resource Center. Philip Cooper, he is embedded into that center and works on our team directly to connect people to education and employment options. And we're really, really proud of that initiative, so I want to give y'all a hats off for the Justice Resource Center too.
Your first priority deals with the opioid crisis here in the country, and I'll tell you a story. On July 3rd of last year, at about 4:15 in the afternoon, I was driving away from campus and I saw vehicles, rescue vehicles parked with their lights on outside of one of our classroom buildings. When I went down there to see what was going on, our campus police officer said, "There's a student in the bathroom, he is dead." I stuck around for an hour to meet the wonderful lady who's going to be with you, who's going to speak to you now, his mother. Stuart Mosley is gone from us, but his mother is still with us, working very hard on the opioid crisis in Buncombe County, Ms. Seaman.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank AB Tech and the county government for the opportunity to share about my personal experiences with the college and their initiatives to address the opioid epidemic. When my son Stuart was found dead on the AB Tech campus last July, the college administration did not wait for a focus group or a mandate to initiate a response to his suspected opioid death. No, they chose to address the problem immediately. Their first response came the semester following Stuart's death. In less than two months, President King and his staff quickly amended the success and study skills curriculum to include information about opioids. They also invited me to appear in a video to speak about my experience with Stuart and his fight with addiction. Every incoming student is required to take this class, so adding the material to this particular class guarantees that the broadest possible audience is exposed to opioid education. The result of this addition has led to a number of meaningful conversations inside of classrooms. Many students have identified themselves as needing help, or they have offered to help others who struggle. This open sharing among students has helped to reduce stigma and has encouraged those affected to seek help. Part of the college's commitment to educating not only the students but also the community was demonstrated in hosting the opioid forum at the end of January. The forum was advertised broadly, and an outreach campaign was used to pull in students with addiction challenges for a pre-event. Nearly two dozen students attended this preliminary program to learn about on-campus services and to eat dinner before the forum presentation. Recovery from drug dependence is a stressful process for students, or anyone for that matter. Oftentimes, they are starting over, trying to repair relationships and remake themselves, holding a job, paying rent, buying groceries, perhaps supporting a family. That describes the typical AB Tech student in recovery. Many of them often lack driver's licenses and cars, so getting around is tenuous. All of this can make the daily task of living and going to school overwhelming. It does not take much to derail an education when so much is going on in their lives. However, even with challenges, these students choose to look forward, not back. They are an inspiration. In order to support students wherever they are on the recovery spectrum, Dr. King and the Student Support Services Team have identified the need for a safe space for this population. The new space is imagined as a place where students can drop in to chat with a caring and understanding individual. It can be a place for students to gather and offer mutual peer support. Information about local resources and treatment organizations will also be available. Mayhem has expressed interest in working with this project. Despite the struggle to locate space on an already crowded campus, it now looks as if this simple welcoming lounge will be up and running by the end of summer. Yes?
Yes.
I am excited about the possibilities. AB Tech is uniquely positioned to be of help to the age demographic most impacted by this health crisis. The average age of a student at AB Tech is 24, and nearly half of the student body is between the age of 21 and 34. This student body makeup closely mirrors the ages of those most impacted by opioids. In fact, nine out of 10 students requesting on-campus counseling services self-identify as having addiction issues. In addition to serving students who ask for help, AB Tech's training programs in nursing, substance abuse counseling, and emergency services, thank you guys, can be strengthened by the college's engagement with those directed, directly impacted by this epidemic. This confluence fulfills the college's vision of changing lives and strengthening the local community. I applaud the campus leadership for making the disease of opioid dependence a priority, and I thank all of you for placing this at the top of your strategic plan. When students succeed, we all succeed. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I think you can tell that Ann Seaman is a very brave person. She continually works throughout this community on this issue, and it certainly is going to be a testament to her, her son. Our, your second priority deals with early childhood education, and I want to call on Jennifer Bosworth, our early childhood chairperson, to discuss that with you.
Good afternoon, again, it's been a while since we've seen each other, since I've been in your presence. My name's Jennifer Bosworth, and I'm the chairperson of the Early Childhood Department at AB Tech. I'm here today to talk about what we've been talking about greatly, about the importance of early childhood and that time span in life. Forty-nine years ago this week, Fred Rogers spoke in front of the US Senate, and he spoke to save public television. I'm a child of Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. My children are children of Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, and I'm sure many of you were also children of Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. What you might not know is Mr. Rogers was a child development expert. His television show was intentional, was engaging, and was designed to support children's social, emotional competence and their understanding of the world around them. That's what we do in our early childhood program. We teach teachers who will then go into classrooms or who may already be in classrooms to plan intentional, engaging, developmentally appropriate activities for the children in their care, typically birth to age five. I want to share a story with you because our program brings in some interesting students. We have students who experience homelessness, we have students who experience domestic violence and hunger, but I want to share with you a story about Heather. Heather will graduate this coming Saturday, and she has already been hired by her internship placement. So at the end of their degree program, they take the Early Childhood Capstone course. She is taking and completing that course and is hired by her placement. We place about 13 students a semester in programs in our community for this Capstone experience. Heather started in our program in 2010. Then she stopped. That's not an untypical experience. She stopped. Her father had cancer. They weren't sure of his life expectancy, so she left school, life interrupted school, but she came back in 2015. And since 2015, she has made two B's. And since 2015, she has made two beats: while going to school full-time, while working full-time, while having a child and beginning a family, and while that child has experienced medical difficulties that has put him in the hospital. Each semester when I teach the Capstone course, I ask the students for reflection on their experience. And I want to share some of what Heather had to say about her experience in our program. She said, "I think the most rewarding experience was teaching the children and finally realizing that I am capable of being a teacher." I have worked in childcare for 20 years, and I actually supervised Heather for a short period of time when I was an administrator in one of our local programs. Heather has always been a capable teacher. She didn't see that in herself. She said, "Finally realizing that these things about teaching and about myself has been amazing. I feel a new confidence in myself when talking or thinking about teaching. Overall, I've changed a great deal. I feel more confident in teaching and implementing lesson plans. I feel that I've always known what to do, but I was not very confident in myself." Our program is a rigorous program. We expect a great deal of our students from the introduction course. All of our courses in the program require that students get out into the community, working with children, families, or programs. And how that looks can be a single assignment. It can be a number of hours. Up to the Capstone course where they're in a classroom nine hours a week, and then with me, two hours every other week to debrief on what they've been learning and experiencing. So I always ask my Capstone students to share their words of wisdom for future students. And here's what Heather had to say: "To not give up no matter what. Remember why you wanted to go into this career and to continue to push through. We are the ones who make a difference in children's lives. I wish I would have known how truly rewarding this is. I did it for the degree because I had to for my job, but that quickly changed. This experience has been an amazing one. It has shown me that I am capable of doing anything I set my mind to." A lot of our students, 76% of our students are retired. And a lot of those students are already working in childcare. So having these words of wisdom for future students, we're doing more than giving them child development and content knowledge around how and what to teach young children. And why is this important to your strategic priority? It's critical because without high-quality teachers, you can't develop a high-quality workforce, nor can you support children. Listening to Dr. Baldwin and Asheville City Schools previously, they talked a lot about behavioral health issues in schools. A lot of the work that we do in early childhood revolves around social-emotional competence. And without social-emotional competence, children don't know what to do with the big emotions that they feel. And if we can begin to teach these skills to our teachers now, so that when they're in centers, as they work on their degree, or when they finish their degree, they are building social-emotional competence that supports, hopefully, better behavioral health in K-12 settings. What we do in early childhood matters. You've been briefed many times on the first 2,000 days. What we do at AB Tech is to teach the teachers who are with those children in the first 2,000 days. We are partnering with Warren Wilson College and Burner Center for Early Learning, as well as Buncombe County Schools, specifically Owen High School, to build that career pipeline, because we've also talked many times about our shortage of staff or our childcare centers. That partnership will be coming before you. Beginning of June, I believe, we'll be meeting and sharing that partnership with you then. That's going to be important because we're picking up those high school students. We have high school students through the career and college promise now, and we're going to be working harder to figure out how to help them be more successful, because that's where we struggle right now. It's important that we do this because our field and our community needs more teachers so that there can be more classrooms, so that we can meet the strategic priorities set forth by the county. Any questions for me? I'm going to conclude, and I'm going to dash off back to my office because grades are due tomorrow at 10:00 AM. I have some grading to do, so forgive me for running out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, uh, skip over Priority Three, not because it's not important. And I hope you see in there that there are lots of reasons, a lot of lots of things, rather than going on on the AB Tech campus in support of Priority Three. Priority Four, uh, the thing that I wanted to point out there is the tremendous number of, uh, basic law enforcement students whom we have turned out, uh, since 2015. Since 2015, two years, we've turned out 114 police officers for the various, uh, activities here in... in the area, not only Buncombe County, but also Asheville City, the state police, et cetera. And then down on the... on the third bullet, you'll see a head count of 322 high school students this year. These are, uh, students in, I believe it's four of our high schools, who are taking curriculum law enforcement classes. These are courses that they can put toward a college degree if they choose after they leave high school. That's only one pocket of our high school activity. This year, we will have a little under 1,700 students in the various high school programs, taking classes at AB Tech. Everything from machining on up to criminal justice here. So, again, a lot of activity going on with our wonderful, uh, county schools and city schools, and Madison County schools also. Priority number five, Michael just talked about a little bit, um, before he left. Priority six is, you know, your issue with sustainability. Lynn Orndorf... Orndorf was our, uh, student body president a number of years ago. Uh, since then, she has completed her AB Tech degree and is now teaching in our sustainability program. So Lynn wants to tell you a little bit about that.
Hopefully you can see me over the podium. Nobody in my family has much height to pass down, so... As Dr. King mentioned, I was actually the student body president, uh, 2012 to 2013. I graduated that year with my associate's, uh, applied science in sustainability technologies. And from there, I went on to grad school because I don't do things in order. I get the bachelor's, then the associate's, then the master's. Uh, and now I'm actually back teaching in the Sustainability Technologies Program as an adjunct. Uh, and I also teach a little bit in the ACA program, to teach those study skills courses, which Ann referred to, so I've also been sharing the opioid message as best I can. Going to the school at AB Tech and going through that program helped me find a whole new passion in life. I had been an environmental studies major. Then I went on in life and I worked for magazines. I worked in the retail book industry for about 15 years. I owned a business that the economic downturn pretty much killed, and I decided I needed to go back to school. And that's where I found a whole new eye-opening life of experiences and information. And going grad school, I wanted to share that. So now I have students that I share all this information with. Some of the things that I share with them are very simple: working smarter, not harder, doing more with less, living within our means, using our resources wisely, planning for the future. Those are all concepts that describe sustainability. But they're also relevant to the economy, the finances, and even the county budget, for that matter. You all are kind of tasked with trying to figure out how to make ends meet while meeting our needs. And that, in a nutshell, is what sustainability is, and I try to teach my students that, and they suck it up. Uh, so, just... Your strategic priority number six addresses environmentally responsible energy, renewable energy, as well as educating and equipping... equipping the county to embrace a clean energy future. And that's one of the strategic priorities that my particular program, my students, are really engaged with. Students in Sustainability Technologies learn how to build energy-efficient green buildings, without which we would need too much renewable energy sources. They design and install renewable energy systems. And they do all of that while learning to respect and manage our natural resources and environmental resources that we all benefit from. These students learn how to think critically and creatively, and how to problem-solve innovatively with systems-thinking-based approaches. And they do all of it with such an intensity. They come up with ideas. I... I have one student who was trying to figure out how to turn his compost into gas to run the cook stove in the RV that he's living in as a tiny home that he uses solar energy to power now. And he's always trying to figure out ways to put it together. Uh, many of our students also are involved in strategic, uh, priority number three, which addresses housing to some degree in the county. And we skipped over, but a lot of our programs do address it to some degree. But our construction management students are learning how to build homes that are green. They're cost-effective in terms of the materials and the money you put into them. Quality homes that'll last people for a long time. One way that they're actually learning how to do that is by building tiny homes, which maybe someday would be one part of the solution for the county's housing conundrum. In addition to acquiring knowledge and developing skills that will help them secure jobs and fill needs of area employers, they are also taking their education home with them and out into the community in many other ways. My energy use analysis students have been applying what they have learned about reducing residential energy consumption to their own households, and to those of their relatives and friends, and to some strangers they've met while they're waiting in line at the grocery store. Uh, in terms of enrollment, we do have pretty nice numbers, I think, for our programs. Sustainability Technologies has had an average of about 49 students from 2012 to 2017, 28 of which have gotten the full degrees. Many of my students come out of construction. Many are veterans. Many have gone back into the workforce after a few courses or a year or two of the program without completing. We also have another 46 to 50 students in the construction management programs. And we have a bunch of graduates in that as well, close to 60, I believe, in that same time period of 2012 to... to present. Currently, a third of my students are actually enrolled in another program we have on campus, which is brewing, distilling, and fermentation. Uh, and that obviously connects to our area's newest identity as a craft brewing epicenter. Most of these particular students have never thought about clean energy, clean water, or saving resources. They just want to make beer and make money. These are the students that I have seen have the greatest paradigm shift in these areas. They're the ones who suddenly change habits to conserve energy and resources. They're the ones who are now going home and lecturing their spouses, their kids, their parents about doing the same thing. And I also hope that those people that they're telling go out and tell two other friends, just like the old shampoo commercial. And I hope that these students are going to be ones who go out and start work businesses or work for businesses that are also giving back and enhancing our community and employing renewable energy, like New Belgium already does. My students have a thirst for knowledge and a strong desire to find better ways to generate and use energy, to build and renovate houses that are better for us and use fewer resources, to ensure our mountains, county, and region retain their natural beauty so we can all enjoy the myriad benefits they provide us. Sometimes they get a little frustrated, even angry, that we don't do more. And then they come up with ways to make change happen. They're also eager and excited to make the county and the rest of the world a better place to live with opportunities for everyone to thrive. So ultimately, by supporting AB Tech, the county is helping AB Tech educate and equip students and community members for achieving strategic priority six. Of course, educating and equipping the community with knowledge and skills is exactly what a community college does best. And both AB Tech and Buncombe County are committed to our communities and a better future for generations to come. Especially my students. They're... that's what they're all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope we, uh, gave you just a... small picture of what AB Tech does. There's so much more over there. I like to say that of the 55% of our students who are in one-year diploma programs or two-year, uh, applied science programs, we are making taxpayers out of tax burdens. And I hope you keep that in mind because that is the purpose of your community college. And now the numbers. Dirk Wilmeth is going to, uh, come forward. Dirk is our CFO. Dr. Dirk Wilmeth will talk to you about the budget. Before he does, I was remiss in not pointing out to you, uh, Beth Gentry back here, who runs the college budget for us, and Carrie Glover over here, our executive director of communications and marketing. Dirk.
Yeah, I have a very brief presentation. This is primarily a tuition budget request. So, uh, we're not proposing any major new initiatives. But I want to thank the commission for its commitment, uh, to our, uh, long-term repair and replacement plan. Uh, we have begun to have input... impacts, positive impacts, in terms of operational energy savings. So we're grateful for that. I'm not going to talk about that today, as that's already in place. Uh, we do have a summary budget that I placed inside your packet, so hopefully, inside here, it will bond the pages, stay together. And, uh, on the first page is a summary, high-level summary of where we are with our budget, uh, this year, as well as our proposed budget for next year. What we're asking... you're providing, uh, Buncombe County is providing possibly 12 and 1/2% of our overall operating budget, the majority of which comes from the state of North Carolina. So what we're asking is a very modest increase of $220,000. And that is designed primarily to cover, uh, three... three areas of expected increase. I will mention also that the college, at your direction, over the last few years, has been whittling down and paying off or utilizing cash reserve, which at one point was over $2 million. So with modest increases in requests to you, we've now whittled, uh, that $1.2 million in cash reserve this year down to 371 at the end of March. We anticipate there will be close to $200,000 as we start the new year. So the amount that you appropriated for us last year was $6.28 million. And what we're asking for in this new year is $6.5 million, plus the utilization of the... of the cash or fund balance. Now, listening to the other institutions today, I got a little concerned about getting too close to the, uh, to the, uh, bottom of the pit on cash reserves. That, uh, that amount that's there would represent a 4.5% reserve that would be utilized. And obviously, if we were closer to the 1/12th that I think Buncombe County Schools talked about, that would be... that would need to be closer to 8.3, almost double that figure. So with that in mind, we are asking for a very modest increase. And, uh, the... our salaries and benefits are 50% of the overall budget, which is lower than some of the others. Uh, and then our operating and repair expenses are about 30% of our budget. And then our utilities are about 20%. So what we're asking for in terms of increases are, uh... and here again, I don't know where the other school districts got their numbers. We were told by our community office, our community college system office, to anticipate a 1% pay increase, or the three or four. So, and they may be... they have... they have other sources, and I might check the governor's budget to see what he recommends. If you don't know. But we anticipate a 1%, and we built that into our numbers, along with the pension and the health care increases that we anticipate at this point. Then the second major increase is just, not major, but, uh, just a few thousand dollars more to address kind of the routine maintenance, preventative maintenance and whatnot. It's a little bit below the radar in terms of the larger projects that you're funding through the other capital repair and replacement plan. And then the... the final one is, like the other entities, we anticipate that we're going to see a... see somewhere in the neighborhood of a 5% increase, particularly in the Duke Energy and other utility areas. So that's been accounted for here as well. So overall, we would ask that, you anticipate that we would be spending $6.8 million next year. And again, if we could scroll down, that represents $220,000 increase, a 3.5% increase over what you gave provided for us this year. This is all supported behind that by several pages of details, which I know in the past Diane has asked for, to show you how we're spending our money on a line item basis, and there are other ways that we can slice it as well. But then on the page five, you'll see questions that were addressed to us, I believe by Mandy, at your request, and we have answered those, and I'll highlight very quickly our answers to these. You asked about supplemental funding, and in fact, college has not provided across the board a supplement to our county employees since 2015 and 16. So all of that has been essentially underwritten by the state budget at this point. So these were the state employees had a 7% supplement, I believe it was, and we decided to put that all to the state budget and moving forward from that point in order to use those funds as part of our operations. So I've got that there. There are a few exceptions still that remain in the budget, but they're very modern numerically. Then number two is, what's the plan for ensuring adequate maintenance to protect the major capital investments that you're making? And I refer to those already, so I won't go into that. But if you read that, you'll see very quickly that we expect to work much more smartly, much more efficiently, and to be able to utilize our operating funds in a better fashion as a result of improved performance of facilities. We talked, you asked about how workforce needs and the community impact our decisions at the college, and I think you've heard a lot of that from our previous presentations. But there's some specific overviews of how in content as well as in curriculum, we are engaged with the community in identifying these opportunities as quickly as they come about. And then finally, you asked about the predictive impact of the state budget. And again, we, the college has been able to maintain a relatively stable enrollment over the last few years. We're down slightly, fifty students in FTE over the last two years, so less than 1%. And so as a result of that very slight decrease, we expect that, whereas this year we have almost $41 million in state funding, we expect that it will decrease about $285,000 as a result of that downturn in enrollment. So that's the primary impact at this point in terms of the steady state expectations that the county system office has provided us. And just for your education or information, the last page is an overview of that initial state allocation, showing the FTE numbers for the last year and this year, projected for this year, next year, as well as the impacts on the formulas that are used to generate the state budget. So that's pretty much it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to field them or have others address them.
I've got a couple quick ones. Ninety thousand, you're projecting a $90,000 increase in utilities?
Yes.
And when you add them up, I guess?
Well, it's nine hundred thousand, and right this year we're projecting eight hundred and fifty, so about $50,000 increase.
You got twenty thousand on total surface gas, and you got another twenty thousand on water, so that's ninety thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question that, I've actually come from Commissioner Frost, she was wondering, is there, if an employer is wanting to hire individuals from AB Tech, is there a phone number that's published where employers can contact AB Tech?
Typically, what happens with our applied science programs is the contact is made with the department chair. You can imagine with all the activities that we have on that campus, there's no one person who's an expert on what goes on in a given area. So contacts are made with the department chair in the area where the person is looking for a student to employ. A good example would be welding. We get calls regularly in the welding department. Have you got a student who would like to work part-time for me? We're always worried about that because those students sometimes never return, but that's the way it happens.
So I guess, can you just provide that information back to us?
Sure.
Questions?
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
We don't have a lot of information packets, both from the fire districts and that tends to put together, you along with your area. We're not going to go over those, we're just going to jump right into here and from our district.
Chair and commissioners, feel free to take a look at that presentation, ask any questions if you have them. That does include basic financial information as well as some recommendations moving forward. With that said, I want to thank our fire chiefs, fire districts, for coming over today. We want to spend time focusing on their needs and requests. In your packet, you will have a handful of documents. I'll show you what those look like. You've asked that our fire districts have made a one-page summary that looks something similar to what you see on your screen. That is in your packet, so each district has prepared one that outlines kind of the nature of the request, the communication strategy, things like that. They are in order. Our presentation order today, we're going in alphabetical order, so we're going to start with Barnardsville, and then we're going to end with West Buncombe. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Barnardsville.
Can I make a request that folks really speak into the mic? It's kind of hard to hear.
Absolutely.
Hey, good evening, man.
I was just hearing.
Give you our wish, please.
If you're going to interrupt, if you actually speak in the center of the room, everyone can hear better because the mics in the ceiling work better than the podium mic.
Come to the center of the room.
Yeah.
There we go.
My name's Kevin Munsey. I am a fire chief out at the Barnardsville Fire Department, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you this afternoon. We are a fire department and also run a ambulance out of our station. We have been there now for sixty years in the community and have been running it for the last fifty-four. This year, we are asking for a four cent tax increase. We're currently at sixteen cents, and we want to go to twenty. Using these funds, we want to, as the most of you were at the early January meetings, where the presented the payroll studies and stuff for the county, we did not realize we was that far behind as we was. So a portion of this fund will go to give our firefighters and paramedics an increase in wages to get those up to at least the state average and to be kind of in line as well as some of the other methods that folks in our county pays their employees. We also are wanting to put a penny of that into our reserve account to help us keep that fund balance at a good steady flow of at least three months, so you know, ahead. And we also are wanting to purchase this year ten sets of gear, which takes roughly a penny of that to do that. And we also have been in our new building, we didn't use no more, we've been there for twelve years, and we've had to kind of neglect some of the general maintenance a bit over the last few years because we didn't have money to kind of keep up some of the general maintenance, such as concrete, asphalt, pollen, car. We've got a lot of painting in the building we need to do, et cetera, et cetera. So a portion of those funds, we go to bring our building back to good standard. We are looking also to provide our employees with some retirement benefits. We are not eligible for the state retirement system due to the federal tax code that's out there, so we, as volunteer departments, have to, well, there's a few in the county that actually got grandfathered in, and I think in the seventies or eighties, but we have to, if we want to give them retirement, we have to do kind of our own thing, through either 401Ks, something of that nature. We about three years ago got into the North Carolina State Firefighter Association retirement thing that they're kind of over shepherd, I don't know if anyone wants to look at that. But it is a more widely invested thing that the employees can get a better variety of investment on. We're wanting to do a percentage for the employees. Currently, we are just giving like a monthly, set monthly rate every month for them, and I think it's a hundred dollars currently, but we're wanting to do a percentage match like up to 6%. If the employee puts 6%, we want to match that at 6% to give them a better return on their retirement, once they stay with us for X amount of years. But that's pretty much what we want to do with our four cents. Any questions?
How long have you had ambulances?
We've had an ambulance for fifty-four years, since 1964. We went to the paramedic level in the fall, November of 2016. We've been at the paramedic level for almost a year and a half, which is something we're real proud of.
So I've got just two comments. One is, I want to do this before, forget it, I want to make sure that as a commission, we want to thank you guys for what you do. You know, this is, we get called, this is a lot of listening, and don't pay attention to our countments, we've been listening all day, and we want to make sure that you know that, how much we appreciate what you do, it's invaluable, and we're very, very grateful. The other thing is, I have to challenge myself and others to not just look at when you say cents or cents, to look at the dollar amount, because there's a big difference between Barnardsville and maybe somewhere else when you're talking about that. It's very important for us to process and think about the dollars when we're listening to you, too.
Four cents for us would be roughly $140,000 for you. It's $36,000, so my dollar opinion is whatever.
And I have one other question, I don't know why it's this, it looks like it is, so you all might kind of think about this, you know, when you're talking about payroll and staffing, you might kind of give us an idea, you know, just briefly what that, you know, what that will be, or are you adding people, or are you giving raises to that type?
We are not adding anybody, that would just be even increases to our current employees that don't stay.
That pretty much all levels are pretty much across the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A quick note for the board, we prepared a summary document for you that translates the tax rate increases into dollars, so just take a look at that as you're going through. Our next up is Robert.
My name is Brent Hager, I'm the fire chief at Broad River Fire Department. Thank y'all for giving us this opportunity today. Broad River, over the last year, has worked on the payroll and the budget we had to do some savings, we found trying to increase some of the payroll to get it up to average. We were well below it in several positions. We're asking to increase the rate from fourteen to sixteen, which equates to roughly $34,000, $35,000. And the primary purpose of it is, is for salaries, the part-time position that we have, we're wanting to expand that to weekend coverage, too. Right now, they work Monday through Friday basis. Volunteers typically handle the weekends, and we've seen that declining over the years due to family commitment and everything, so we're wanting to expand that part-time on end of the weekend coverage, at least daytime. Other than that, nighttime, we have fairly significant response from the volunteers. The other part of it, about $17,000 of that would go towards structural firefighting gear. Most of our gear now is ten to twelve years old. Some of it doesn't look as bad as other, but either way, we need to start getting on a replacement plan. So we're wanting to replace three to four sets a year, and we may get a grant some years and not the other. If we get a grant, we can replace more, but we can't budget on the grant. And that's the main two things that we're focusing on with the increase. Any questions?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really good at finding fire, but all these numbers make them out. I don't know how you guys do it all day long. I'm with the East Buncombe District, I work for the Black Mountain Fire Department, so we have the town district and the East Buncombe District. We're asking for a 2.1 cent increase in the fire tax. The above neutral that we got, is it last year? We spent about, we got about $44,000, we used that for a new position. We have three stations, two of those are manned and one of those are unmanned. The two, the sub, two substations serve primarily the East Buncombe Fire District. But Station Two often has one firefighter at a time working per shift over there, so this day and time, that's not safe. So that's why we're trying to get at least two over there all the time, so there's not so many by themselves. So we added a position last year. We have three shifts, and with the increase this year, we'll add a new position so we can have two people at that substation all the time. And our minimum staffing now is four. We'd like to, with this increase, take that to five. We will be adding 3,700 hours of additional part-time help, so we can have a part-time firefighter every shift. So that'll take our shifts from, right now, five or six, to six full-time and one part-time per day. But on five out of seven days a week, somebody's always off for overcomp time, sick leave, annual leave, whatever, so it drops our staffing down to five or six. I broke that down, 2.1 cents gives us roughly $162,000. One new position's about $53,000. The new part-time hours is about $48,000. We are going to raise with this increase our part-time salary so that we can be more competitive with other fire departments in the county and with the Buncombe EMS. The current 4,900 hours that we use in part-time help with the paid raise, we'll add another $15,000. That leaves about $45,000 left. And right now, with the town, every year, like this coming budget year, we have money going into capital for our building that we need to be remodeled since it was built in 1987, and we put money in for new equipment. We just bought a new fire truck, and we paid cash for it because we saved over the years. We have fourteen pieces of equipment, and seven of those need to be replaced due to age, and four of those are just for the East Buncombe Fire District. So by adding forty more, five more thousand dollars to that capital reserve fund, it'll help us build that fund up to replace those fire equipment quicker. And if you're not familiar with the cost of a fire truck, we're looking at half a million dollars more for a custom first-out pump. Any questions?
What's the life of your fire trucks typically?
Well, NFPA recommends, that's a convict question, NFPA recommends fifteen years on the first-out truck, and that means that's the first truck out the door on a structure fire. So, but we have other trucks that are longer. We like to, twenty is a good number, twenty years, for those, some trucks, and then we have some other trucks that like tanker trucks that can, that can last longer, so.
It's a long, long way to go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, guys. We are doing things a little bit differently on the Fairview side of the street in the sense to show support to Chief Scott Jones. We elected to do it from a board standpoint, as far as us being truly the volunteers of the bunch in dedicating our service. And I am honored to serve, my name is Jeff Auger, I'm the chairperson for our Board of Directors, and we are asking for a six-and-a-half cent increase in our current tax rate. So financially, how did we get here? Well, we actually, from 1990 to 2013, had the lowest tax rate in the county. And the Fairview Fire Department Board of Directors are proud of that fact, are proud of the fact that we did have a reserve built up. But come around 2009, we realized that we were not going to be able to sustain operations, especially given our model of continuous improvement. We were fortunate in 2017 to have our Class Three rating provided to us by the North Carolina Department of Insurance. That was due to the very hard work of our firefighting staff under the direction of Chief Jones. As far as maintaining- I'm the chairperson for our Board of Directors and we are asking for a six and a half cent increase in our current tax rate. So financially, how did we get here? Well, we actually from nineteen ninety to twenty thirteen had the lowest tax rate in the county. And the Fairview Fire Department Board of Directors are proud of that fact, are proud of the fact that we did have a reserve built up. But come around two thousand and nine, we realized that we were not going to be able to sustain operations, especially given our model of continuous improvement. We were fortunate in twenty seventeen to have our Class Three rating provided to us by the North Carolina Department of Insurance. That was due to the very hard work of our firefighting staff under the direction of Chief Jones. As far as maintaining that Class Three rating though, the Department of Interior, the Department of Insurance has advised us that we do have a strong need to build a substation out along the seventy-four A corridor near the top Minehole Gap to provide additional services to the South Cliff area. So that is part and parcel to the need to have that requested tax increase to seventeen cents. Along with that, we would like to add nine additional firefighting personnel to meet our national and state standards, as well as make some energy-saving renovations to our existing substation, which has not had any work since nineteen ninety-seven. So that's why we are here today and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Why do we have to have a three cent?
I'm sorry?
Why do we have to have a three cent insurance rating?
Class Three definitely brings down the insurance rating for our commercial property owners. It doesn't impact as much on the residential side of the street. Some insurance companies do record, or do actually recognize the Class Three rating. So those folks are fortunate enough to get a minimal decrease in their insurance rating. But from a commercial standpoint, there's a substantial savings for those folks.
How much commercial do we have in Fairview?
So unfortunately, we don't have as much commercial as we'd like to have. Hopefully, this would be an opportunity for us to maybe encourage more commercial development in Fairview. Yes, ma'am?
Could you tell us more about the substation? And you said there was a recommendation that that be built and prioritized?
As far as, as what the priority is?
Yeah, just tell us more about that project, please.
We'd probably like to do it over the next five years. We are subject to another Department of Insurance review. And of course, if we don't get that substation built, we don't feel that we'd be able to maintain our Class Three rating. So again, it's just a requirement that would require it to be more toward the Minehole Gap area to be able to encompass that five-mile response radius.
So, two, two, two questions. How much of the funding is for the substation?
That I'd actually have to refer back to Chief Jones.
We broke it down in that template. I don't know.
I apologize, Mr. Bill Crowe.
I know your funding.
Simple problem.
That's why we got all the points of help in the room. So while he's looking at maybe the, the reserve funds, six months, twelve-month operating over five to seven years, six months of how much, how much, what would be the dollars associated with that?
Let me get the spreadsheet here if you can find it. We'll be able to give you the proper answer. Thank you, sir. Have my expectorant myself here and put my glasses on so I can see them. We're all on the screen. Yeah, those bad men need reading glasses and contacts. I kind of add, add insult to injury there.
Don't tell everything.
Yeah, you know, you know what they call somebody that wears suspenders with the belt?
What's that?
Pessimist.
There you go. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. I appreciate your all's patience.
If you can't find it, you can give that information back to us at some point.
We'll be happy to. I'm having to read through this rather rapidly. My speed readings.
What was the question?
The question was the, the substation, just the dollars associated with that overtime. Because I think he was saying y'all were going to do that over five years. So are you setting the money aside or?
That's correct.
To pay for it and/or have debt with that or?
Basically, what, what we were planning on doing is it was broken down and I put it in that template that I provided to you, Mr. Evans here yesterday. Basically, what we did was we built a capital fund and that capital fund is going to be used to, as he spoke earlier, to update our main station, which was the last addition we've done in nineteen ninety-seven. We've got a lot of updating that's need to be done as far as our living areas, as far as the bathrooms, showers, et cetera. Got some roof replacement that needs to be done. So we basically put it all into that capital fund to where when we begin the process of looking for the right property, we will have some money to go towards, you know, maybe deposit or working with our financial lending institutions to work out some type of loan or something like that. So it's basically in that, that capital spinner, capital fund.
So is it safe to say it's important for us to remember that when the fire departments are doing this, it's like a pay-as-you-go? When you're setting the money aside and then doing it and then, instead of creating debt, most of the time, you're setting that money back?
Also, and as, as it was mentioned earlier, I think it was in, it was in our projections. We've got, we've got about five trucks that, one, one is thirty years old. The other one's, I think, twenty-five years old. But we've got about five trucks that are overdue for replacement. If they're, they're overdue of that fifteen-year threshold and they're on a first-out response. So, and they're to the, to the point they, they need to be replaced. And as mentioned earlier, you know, you're looking at about five hundred thousand plus just for the truck. So we're, we're looking at a lot of expense to basically, to keep up and maintain what we've got.
Do you guys mind if I just ask a question, though, just kind of on this point? Because it is, it's an interesting and relevant point. In terms of vehicles, I'm just going to do a straw poll if y'all mind. How many of the districts use financing to acquire vehicles as opposed to, you know, pay cash for it upfront? So who, who does do financing for, for vehicles? Okay, so maybe about, about half and then about half are just doing cash? Interesting. Thank you.
Fire apparatus especially is drastically increased over the years to where it's got to a point, I'm speaking for Fairview, it's very hard to basically save money to be able to pay cash for it.
Yeah.
I'll give you an example. Our, our thirty-year-old truck, of course, that was purchased before my time. They paid a hundred thousand dollars for it. That same truck today, I mean, not adding any bells and whistles, but you buy that same truck today and it's over five hundred thousand dollars. So from nineteen eighty-eight until now, that's how much fire apparatus has increased over the years.
When we were looking going from a Class Six to a Class Three rating, one of the things that the Department of Insurance required of us was to build a station out in the south, a substation out in the south into our district, somewhere along the Kane Creek Road area. In an attempt to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, we found a good piece of property along Kane Creek Road and then secured estimates to have that substation built. It was going to run us about one point four million dollars to build on a green site. We were fortunate enough as a board to find an existing piece of property that had a metal building on it and ended up being able to purchase that metal building, the property, and do renovations to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars and ended, then ended up selling the property on Kane Creek Road. So we try very hard to be, again, very responsible with our taxpayer dollars.
There's not a specific site for the new station yet? It's, it's conceptual.
No, sir, just we're, we're aware of the fact that we need to put along seventy-four A, hey, somewhere around the Minehole Gap area.
Minehole Gap. Reynolds, Reynolds Fire Department's one mile down the hill.
The very top of the district. The problem that we've got, Mr. Fryer, is we've got residents up in that South Cliff area that are outside of that five-mile response radius. So what we're hoping to do, and we'd actually looked at a piece of property. I think it was operated as a mechanic shop. I can't remember exactly what it was, along seventy-four A that was near Churchill Downs. And unfortunately, the concrete was so, the work was so shoddy on the concrete that it wouldn't support the weight of the trucks even if we had it refurbished. That would be an optimum area for us to find, somewhere along that stretch that could put us in the middle of the top of Minehole Gap and of course, the middle of our main station.
Okay, if, if you don't do the substation, what does that do to the insurance rate?
We run the risk of losing that Class Three and going back to a Class Six rate.
What does that do to the residential insurance? Nothing.
Wouldn't be that much of an impact on the residential rates. But again, it's that quality of service that we're proud to be able to provide our residents in Fairview that we really strive to maintain.
Residents will be the ones that's paying for the bill of thinking about it.
That's correct. And as a resident, I'm proud to do that myself, so.
As a resident, I'm not.
It will drastically affect the South Cliff development for the simple fact of it's a little over four miles to the entrance to that development and they've divided that development into phases. And when they, we measured, when, said when the second phase started, that put them over the five-mile district or five miles away from our main station. So yes, it will drastically affect the residential properties from that point on in that development. They will go to probably a Class Nine in that area.
What about, where's our, how far is the substation now from?
The, North Carolina Department of Insurance will not let you count the, I mean, the, the neighborhood department has to be from the first responding fire district is the way they work that.
Don't we have a substation on Old Fort Road?
Yeah, it's five miles out Old Fort Road.
Okay, any other questions?
So I know this is what you were asking the chief and he should correct it, but it's, our increases for existing positions is about a hundred and seventy-five. New positions, three hundred, almost three hundred and eighteen. Capital, two seventy and reserves, two fifty. And then about a hundred for payroll, retirement, unemployment, affecting stuff. So that's your break.
That's your break. And so a four, so just a fourth of it then is going to Minehole?
That's correct.
But, but would you hire the additional, if you just hypothetically, if you didn't do the new substation, would you do the new staffing?
Well, I don't think we're able to financially.
Those two go together, right?
All of the staffing?
No, no, just the nine additional personnel.
The nine additional, okay.
So is there, and I'm sorry, I'm probably not listening very well. Is some of that to cover your, your vehicles and is this going to address your vehicle needs?
Yes, sir, it is.
It'll at least give us a start on the, the replace, we've got a replacement plan in place. We just don't have the funding to be able to do it.
So another question, this is just for point information, not to get into that discussion because it'd take forever if we did. You know, we have, some people raise their hands and say that they're financing and some are pay-as-you-go. And I know that the fire department's operating as a nonprofit, okay? So they're not under us. It's kind of, you know, I, I get all that. Does it make sense to, at some point in time, to try to figure out a way to create some synergy between these as far as financing and being able to help provide money and, you know, that way and, you know, and?
So we've had one conversation last Monday night. The chief said have a couple more scheduled about going into the next year. How do we evaluate how we, one, equalize their payments over the course of the years so their cash flow's stable? Offer perhaps some avenues around assisting them with financing as well as exploring and, you know, they're not all here, but exploring are there benefits from some efforts to consolidate back office support, administrative costs like payroll and/or health insurance pools? Just ways to help them stretch the dollars they have? So they have agreed to have that ongoing conversation over the next year.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Back when I was doing it with chief then, how long does it take you to pay all a fire truck? Say a half a million dollar truck?
Well, we're having seven, ten years on our notes. Just because we don't want to carry that, that interest burden.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're doing.
When, when you get into those large apparatus like that, the most, I mean, the financial institutions we deal with, they'll require ten percent down if you finance it. So then it's ten percent down and you're looking at, you know, a couple thousand dollars a month payment for seven to ten years.
Don't we, in, in the process, I thought that the fire departments in different areas get a certain percentage of grants to be able to buy? Am I wrong?
The assistance of firefighters' grant program for a vehicle acquisition is extremely hard to get. They, they're very picky on those.
But they will, they will help, won't they, Scott?
Do what?
They will help.
Well, we applied for one and we got shot down because what they do is they look at your, your total fleet and they go by the year, year models. So if, say you, you've got a two thousand, say you've got a two thousand and ten model truck, they look at you as, well, you're not as bad as another one applied that's got something. Like one of our first-up trucks is thirty years old. So they, it's a very strict scoring system and we're, we, we've tried a couple of times for a vehicle acquisition through the AFG and we were shot down very quickly. There've been about five vehicles that have been awarded in the last five years in western North Carolina.
Talking about grant as far as?
Through the grant process in western North Carolina.
It's in western North Carolina.
We got one of those grants for a vehicle a couple of years ago, but like Scott said, it, I think it was eight years of applying and we finally got awarded the vehicle. But the average truck, just average engine life of ours was pushing thirty years at that point. So it's extremely hard to get. And once we were awarded that, they told us, don't even bother applying again because that'll bring your average fleet down or get down, so you'll not get one for another fifteen, twenty years probably. It seems to me if we needed to buy eight fire trucks, that we ought to be able to figure out a way to buy eight fire trucks.
Where the county could come in and guarantee it.
And save money, but that, that's common sense, I think.
Hello.
Hey, French Brawl. Chief French Brawl, Fire Department. We're asking for a two and a half cent increase, which is sixty-eight thousand dollars. The whole two and a half cent is going to payroll and benefits. Bring payroll up to state average for part-time and for full-time employees. Right now, we put, we start at twenty-nine, nine for firemen and with this, this increase, it'll be thirty-four, thirty-four to.
That's good.
Any questions?
Straight to the point.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Ted Lee, we're fire chief. We would will. We serve the district of North Buckland Fire District. We're asking for an eight tenths of one cent increase, equivalent of seventy-eight thousand dollars. That increase will, along with town and Waverbeil funding, allow us to hire three additional positions. That will also create set promotional positions as our plan would be to redo our response plans, which would engage a two-company, the ability to respond to companies and a chief officer, which we feel like will allow us the ability to respond efficiently to our call volume increase. Feel like it will also make our response plans and our firefighters safer. And that is what that seventy-eight thousand dollars, along with Waverbeil funding, will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jay Lee and I'm not the chief of our own fire department, but this is Assistant Chief Vince Carter. I'm the treasurer and we're asking for a one cent increase. And we came to your work study about the compensation program. We were shocked at how bad rentals fared in terms of not only the state average, but even in the county. And we took the PowerPoint that you saw, took it back to our board and they wanted us to make some changes. So we're asking for the one cent plus the increase that the county has built in based on their projection that we would get normally at our regular rate. Those two things together will go one hundred percent to salaries and payroll taxes because of those salaries and the retirement because of those salaries. We're not adding any new people. We did that last year with the revenue neutral money. We did not go revenue neutral. We added three positions last year. And so ours is a hundred percent. Now also in our budget this year, we began the process Now, also in our budget this year, we began the process of paying for a fire truck that we planned to have here the end of June, the first of July. But that, that we had built in and we were planning for that and that's not why we're asking for an increase. The increase is one hundred percent for the firemen. Questions?
I had it all washed.
I'm sorry. I talked too much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I am John Coffey. I'm the interim chief of Riceville Fire Department. We are asking for a one, uh, point eight cent increase, uh, from eleven cents to twelve point eight cents. Uh, just to let you know, we've, uh, started in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, we started, uh, providing our district with ambulance coverage in nineteen sixty-five. We have a very diverse district with subdivisions, developments and working farms. In two thousand and three, roughly around the time when I started at Riceville, uh, we had obtained a class five insurance rating. Uh, and two thousand and sixteen, we went from a class five to a class four. That insurance rating has reduced the premiums on some of those homeowners. The requested, uh, amount is to rectify personnel and staffing needs. Uh, right now, after the workshop that I did not attend, um, last fall. I've only been, uh, here since January, so bear with me on some of the numbers. We are below the state average by ten to twenty-one percent. Now that, uh, that one point eight translates into roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And what we're going to do with that is we want to retain the employees we have and bring their wages up close to a living wage in Buckland County. And since I've been at Riceville, we have lost key people to agencies outside of Buckland County. So we've lost people to other counties only because we couldn't, we couldn't provide them with, uh, with their needs. Uh, that hundred and thirty, uh, like I said, will go towards retention. We've got a lot of people, the taxpayers have invested a lot of money into each of these individuals. Costs a lot of money to get one firefighter online and up to part where he needs to protect the community. We don't want to keep repeating that to train them.
Right.
So if we can retain the good people that we have, then we can move forward on possibly, uh, bringing our staffing needs up to where they need to be. Right now, we're, we're set apart. According to NFPA, uh, seventeen-ten and seventeen-twenty, there's parameters on your population versus your staff. The average in the United States is for every one hundred thousand people, roughly a hundred and sixty-seven firefighters are covered. We have six thousand. Now, bringing that down to the six percent mark, we're supposed to have ten people on staff. We only have two, two full-timers, twenty-four hours. We supplement part-time during the day, but that comes from our ambulance and some of the revenue we generate off the ambulance goes directly into having those people. But that's just part-time. They have other jobs, so, you know, it's, it's hard to try and, uh, provide for the community, um, just off of two people in twenty-four hours a day. So, uh, we haven't asked for an increase in twenty-six years. We've, we've met, uh, revenue right with the cost, just break even, so. But wages and benefits, especially insurance is, is on the rise. And, uh, we'd like to keep, uh, we'd like to keep the people we have. Questions?
Well, just one thing about it. There's a question I just want to ask the man to go. Because they didn't go back to revenue. You, you have received Riceville eight thousand.
Mike, can you speak up?
With, sorry. Okay. Revenue neutral, you didn't go back to. Uh, none of us did. We, everybody said they didn't want to go back. So we didn't, we didn't ask anybody to come back. And Riceville received eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. So you've, you've had a little raise that you didn't understand, I guess, but it's been there. And everybody else received one. I mean, we've got people in the five hundred thousand dollar bracket.
I made a, I made a note of that and had, if we had submitted a revenue neutral budget last year, it wouldn't have allowed us to, uh, make the capital improvement of a building and the storage of our apparatus. We had trucks sitting outside that were just deteriorating in the weather. And to protect the taxpayers' investments, we had to get those protected. And it wouldn't have allowed us to move forward with, uh, both the purchase of a new fire truck and, uh, and an ambulance that was, that was needed. So that, that was the note that I made on why.
Yeah, but I did, I just remember that everybody ended up with something because I was asked by more than one fire chief. So leave it there, even a black mountain they wanted to put. Another fireman across railroad tracks, so they'd have two firemen and a truck, so. But it, it's not like everybody didn't receive something, you know, yeah, your taxes did go up, but they didn't go down either. So that's, that's one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, thanks for having us here today. Just, uh, go over a few, few items. Uh, we had originally submitted, we were working off of our budget, uh, working through actuals as, as we worked through that. We were looking at about a, uh, a, uh, one point nine cents, uh, that we're going to need to meet our budget, uh, what we're looking at. After working with Mandy and Matt and the staff, uh, here, we were able to, uh, identify some sales tax changes that, and, and had some, the biggest thing is having some comfort level with that too, because, uh, sales tax, uh, moving up, there were some significant changes there that, uh, that we were able to identify with that, which allowed us to reduce what we had projected, uh, based off of actuals this year, of what's going to be coming up next year from a one point nine cent increase to a one cent increase. And so we have dropped that down to, uh, make sure that we're meeting that. And, uh, we, we protect twenty-eight thousand residents in fifty-two square miles, thirteen point eight incidents a day. And the, uh, maintaining our revenue neutral rate allowed us to, uh, or a non-revenue neutral rate, the regular rate, allowed us to be able to start building our reserves back up. And I'm sure all of you are familiar with what our reserves were like. Uh, they, they were nonexistent last year. And so we, we had a lot of work to do to get that in place. And that's something that we've started recovering and, uh, we'll be able to achieve that in a three to five-year plan, which will allow us to then push that over to a capital improvement plan, increasing resiliency. The department has developed, our management team has developed a twelve-year budget sustainability plan, which will increase our financial stability and strength over the next few years. Uh, we have, uh, we, our primary purpose for the, uh, for the request is for firefighter pay and benefits. And we have firefighters that are between eight and eighteen percent below state averages, supervisors that are between three and thirteen percent below averages. Uh, we have, uh, we're maintaining high levels of healthcare because we cannot compromise on the healthcare for firefighters. As you can see, all of the injuries and illnesses that are occurring in this industry and we have to maintain that. We're also looking to maintain the salaries so that we can improve recruitment and retention. One of the issues we have is cost of living in Buckland County and the, uh, how much it exceeds state averages, which is why we're having, uh, thirty-five, uh, we have a thirty-five percent reduction in employees that are living in the fire district from ten years ago. So our, ten years ago, we had thirty-five percent more of our employees living in our district. Now, they are either changing professions or they're, most of them are actually moving out of the fire district to other counties because that's where they can afford to live. And so with that being the case in a fire district, the, the importance of that is if we have an incident to occur or a disaster, we have those people readily available to respond back. If you don't have that, then you've got to have staffing that can do that. So we don't have those that we can call back in, uh, like we used to. Uh, the reasons, uh, some of the reasons for the finances is we've been extremely conservative over the years and increasing healthcare cost has been significant. Um, we have, uh, been focused on physical investments instead of, uh, personnel investments, just to maintain our ISO rating. You've heard ISO several times. ISO is our, is one of our industry standards. The other industry standard is NFPA and that keeps us to where we're at. And we've been below a six for over twenty-five years. The economic impact of Skyland Fire Department and, uh, the Skyland Fire District is over ten million dollars. That's a pretty significant number, ten million dollars. We're asking for half of that in fire tax. And so we're saving taxpayers over half of what we're asking for. So, and we have a net economic impact to the Skyland community of five million dollars. And the reason I say that is, uh, and I say it's over five million because those figures are based on homeowner, uh, properties, because business and, uh, commercial properties exceed that. And so we're just stopping at the, at the six value. And some homeowners actually get breaks below a six all the way to a one. Uh, I think Nationwide is the, is the only national, uh, insurance company that does that. And several other insurance companies, uh, will actually drop down. So that's, that's occurring there. So the, uh, uh, the recession created a gap in maintaining our, uh, employees' pay. And that's where, that's, uh, some of where we got to, looking at an average homeowner cost of twenty-four dollars, just over twenty-four dollars a year. Uh, we are communicating, we, we have communicated with churches to, uh, conduct meetings and to talk about our operation, answer questions, inform the community, not only about what is going on here that we're discussing, but all of the fire operations and allow them to do that. We've also, uh, been, uh, quoted in multiple media outlets at the one point nine cent. So I'm sure that everybody will be very happy at the one cent that we have found to be able to go to. We'd like to thank the county management team for their support and guidance as we have developed, uh, our strategic financial plan. Uh, we've worked with all them, uh, Tim and Matt and, uh, Tim Flores is not here and Michael Frew and Mandy and everybody that has helped us throughout this, uh, for the last six months. They have been a significant impact on us and assisted us greatly and we appreciate that. Uh, nearly fifty percent of the firefighters working today will contract an injury or illness due to their career that may be debilitating or deadly. The risk that these firefighters are choosing to make every day and the burden of stress that they carry each week should result in a competitive wage that allows them to support their families without having three additional jobs and the stress of not having wages and benefits that they can live with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Anthony Pailly. I'm the Fire Chief of the Swanville Fire Department. This time last year, I had the opportunity to address you and basically gave you a state of the fire service address. And one of the things that came out of that from county leadership was, we need to make sure we're looking at salaries of our employees. The Swanville Fire Department, last year, we did not go down to revenue neutral, generated ninety-nine thousand dollars for us. But I will go ahead and tell you, I've replaced two trucks with that money that were over thirty years old. I've replaced the ventilators that were over fifteen years old and we replaced some turnout gear that was over twelve years old. So, yes, we did use the ninety-nine thousand dollars that were given to us last year. What's driving our request of one point one cent, which will generate a hundred and three thousand dollars, is your request to us, let's look at salaries. I've lost over twenty-five firefighters since I've been the fire chief to other departments because I can't be competitive. At one time, I was known as the minor league for the city of Asheville because it seemed like I would train all these guys like they do in the, the minor leagues and then go on up to the professional ranks there at the city. Serving our communities a privilege, being able to retain our firefighters because we have a competitive wage, that's something we have to look, we have to do. And we did that pay study at the early part of this year and met with you folks and went over that. I was embarrassed because we were near the bottom. Our part-time salaries were near the bottom, our starting pay was near the bottom. And with this increase and the growth that we had in our community, we're going to be able to bring our wages up to what we would consider the state average. I will actually put five of my guys that will be over the state average and my three newest guys will be so close that once they get some of their training in, they'll be right at the state average. And I know what's going to end up happening here is they're going to say, well, the fire chiefs are making this. I'm going to tell you, I'm nowhere near the state average and it's ludicrous if you look at the state average for my salary to be where it needs to be. And I will go on record to say that, yes, I will get a raise, but it will be nowhere near what the state says it should be. Because my firefighters are important and I'm a taxpayer in my community and we didn't want to put a burden on the taxpayers. We came to you guys, we asked you guys to help us and you have. And, but we can't keep putting the burden on the taxpayers. That's what we do with our budget. We took the growth, what you gave us last year, and this one point one cent, it'll generate a hundred and three thousand dollars and it's going strictly to salaries, every bit of it. Part-time salaries, full-time salaries. We want to keep the people who live in our community in our community and work there. I've lived my community fifty years. I'm fifty years old, so I tell you I've never left. I worked in my community, I love my community and I work for a great profession. What more can you ask for? But I have a sense of pride for my community and all my firefighters have the same. I've got to have a salary range that will say, we want to serve the Swanville citizens. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Evening. Evening. How we doing? Good. Good. I'm Shane Preston. I'm the chief of Romney Fire Department and we're coming to y'all today to ask for a two cent increase. Like, uh, all my colleagues here, what we want to do is we want to retain the staff we have and we're trying to add new staff. We are looking at doing with that two cents is adding a ten percent pay increase for our three full-time captains. Those captains are in charge of two other firefighters on the ship. We're also looking at doing a five percent pay increase for all of our part-time firefighters. What that's going to do is put us closer to the state average. It's not going to put us at the state average, but it's going to do better for what we've currently got. Also, one of the things that we were not able to do in the past is offer a great benefits package for our full-time firefighters. So a portion of this money will also go into a 401K matching plan. We currently have 401K, but we did not have matching. So this will allow three percent matching for all our full-time employees and, which would also add a small life insurance policy for the employees we have. So it would just be a very small fifty thousand dollar policy per full-time employee. Along those lines, uh, we have two stations, our Beaver Dam Station, which was a non-manned substation. We were able to man that station last year using part-time firefighters. We were able to do the remodel on that station using the, uh, money that was generated from the sale of our old fire station on Tisca Highway. We used that money and put about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars into the remodel of that station, so we were able to man that. That station is, for the folks that are not, uh, familiar with our area, it's, it's kind of a geographical oddity. There's areas that, yes, the road miles are within six miles, but the timeframe is fifteen minutes to get there, just due to the way the roads are laid out. So that has cut down our response times drastically to that area. We also used the money from the satellite building to purchase a new brush truck for that building. So we've got newer apparatus for that, but we need staffing for that building. Because at the end of the day, we have to have someone to get the trucks out the door. It's great to have a new fire truck there, but if there's no one there to get it and respond to the calls, we're not being able to serve our community. So we're asking for three full-time positions added on, so that will put us three firefighters a shift. That would be a lieutenant at our substation, a captain at our main station and a part-time firefighter twenty-four hours at our main station. And along those lines, speaking on the grant stuff, we've been very fortunate. We were one of the departments that was able to receive a tanker grant, you know. But it took us, using the truck that was replaced, the reason we were able to get the grant is the truck was a nineteen eighty-six model and the tank was actually hand-built by members of the department in nineteen eighty-six. That's how tight it is for these grants. We literally had to say, look, this truck is not baffled and safe to be driven on the road anymore. That's what it took to get a grant. And Commissioner Fire, on those grants, that's not a hundred percent. The truck was two hundred and forty-eight thousand and our grant was two hundred and eighteen.
that twelve dollars an hour is the living wage in Buckham County. All of our part-time employees all fall under that. So we looked at that and tried to take and get at least those up to living wage. We're having difficulties running part-time staff because of they're getting paid at government and other places. So that's helped us to be competitive. Staffing wise, I've got six employees that live in the county, this is full-time, eight that live outside the county and I have one that lives outside the state, just because the wages and the cost of living in Buckham County. Breakdown of what the money will be going forward, two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Salary increases for existing positions is fifteen thousand dollars. We are looking at adding three new positions because of the call volume that we're running and plus the increase in staffing as far as trying to fill in these part-time positions. That is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And there's a remainder of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, which goes into capital, which will help fund projects like the substation that we're in the process of designing at this point and new engine that needs to be replaced within the next three years. Questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think that concludes all the presentations we had scheduled for today. So thanks to everyone for being here, taking the afternoon. Everybody did a great job and a lot of information processed, but it's great to hear, you know, the high-level information about what's going on in each of the districts. So thank you all for being here this afternoon.
Chairman?
Yes, sir?
Uh, we're about ten minutes early. They went through it pretty quick. Chief Badenfeld here from Inkon did not ask for any. Do you care the same thing why or what your issues are?
Inkon did not ask for a tax rate increase this year, one, because we did not go revenue neutral last year and we received a little bit of extra money for that. What'll happen next year, I don't know. To remain competitive with all the counterparts here, we may have to come and visit you next year. We thought to be were solid for this year and with the growth that we're expecting, we are expecting to occur and it is occurring in this condition, we felt that we were okay to stay at a nice interest rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we just have a couple of announcements to make, right? May fifteenth at five p.m. will be the next regular meeting of the county commissioners here at two hundred and Hall Street, Street three twenty-six. And on June fifth at five p.m., the commissioners will have a regular meeting at the same location. And during the meeting on June, June fifth, the board will hold the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year nineteen vote. And that's all of our business for today, so if there's no other issues, we are adjourned.